You always stand for the prayer of the past, and this pastor is a common servant for Charlotte's Methodist Church.
So, we thank you for that period of speaking and calling your God. We ask you, Lord, to look upon us not only now but always in our endeavors. And we're pleased with you and our approach to what we do and the attitude that we have and accomplish what our missions are in the line. I thank you for this, board of county commissioners, each one of those who work for that company, goers in our community, that they would be blessed with the wisdom of the service they need and if they make decisions that affect each and every citizen of this county as they apply the law, the rule of law, and what they have to do. If they do it, Lord, in a way to be of a servant attitude, then we, as we always appreciate their concern and seeing that each one of them is cared for in a way that raised glory to you. Thank you, Lord, for the freedom and privilege to be able to call out to you and ask your blessing upon us. I pray for our men and women, uniformed and military, first responders, by law enforcement officials, each one of the ghosts of the county board and that government's safety and service to this nation. I pray that we be reunited as one nation under God, to serve you the best way we know how. We ask you to forgive us of our sins, and I pray that Jesus may save us.
(Inaudible)
Number three, approval of the reviled agenda. We are adding eleven A to the consent agenda. The board can secure approval of replacement from First Baptist Church of Madison and use this to weigh vote for ten votes for the twenty nineteen A of Paperhead six in Congress. Are there any other additions or revisions to the agenda? Not to the date agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the reviled agenda?
Motion to approve, please.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries. Do you have some public hearings on the floor? The board will hold a public hearing that for this date at nine AM or as soon thereafter as possible to discuss and debate public camps for the local transportation to the bed program.
So, our local transportation to bed program is a great program that benefits several of our residents in Taylor County. We currently have twenty-five staff on several that run through Monday through Saturday. We also provide transportation to our veterans, to the VA hospital in Light City in Tallahassee every week. And we provide transportation for our special Olympics participants, where the faculty and the staff program. In two thousand and eighteen, seventeen victims, two hundred and thirty-three passengers rose to show, five thousand eight hundred and thirty were for medical, three thousand five hundred and forty were for unemployment, four thousand three hundred and seventy-six were for education or vacators, one thousand five hundred and seventy-six were for nutritional, and one thousand nine hundred and eleven were for life support. I would like to thank the board for your continued support of the program. Thank you, we've got a lot of support and confidence in the program, and we'd like to thank Mr. Conrad for bringing the free holiday cell phone.
Thank you. This grant is received with parts that may have a public hearing. So, at this time, I'd like to open the floor to the public hearing, so anyone who might come forward and speak. You can do so at this time, come to the podium, press your name and address.
Hello, board, I'm T. T. Chappell, here to me, I'm Roll Trust. I also write the exams personally for myself, I'm also post-special Olympics. And this show is so very vital to this community who are happy to, that's their own way of transportation. You know, a lot of people let their own way of transportation, you come to the doctor's or whatever, and we depend on it so much, and it's so vital to the community, and I hope it continues because it is so necessary. Thank you all very much for your time.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, if not, I agree with what's been said, this is a very, very important program. We've always supported this program and we will continue to support it, do anything that we can to help. Appreciate everything, your staff guys and volunteers and everybody else who's helped us, help us to work on this program. Anybody else?
If there's anything that you need to, and I'll go, I'll go for it. This is, we only have one vote given, is it?
One.
Okay. Some of these folks, I like them that much.
Okay. If there's no one else that's with a speechable, come to public hearing.
I make the motion to speak. I'm taking a turn. The transportation is down, I'm taking my own motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner DeWitt, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Number five, the board will hold a second and final public hearings that for this date at nine oh five AM or as soon thereafter as possible on the passage of a proposed ordinance to amend ordinance number two zero one one dash zero three, Taylor County Code Section forty-two seven one seven setback. Remember, this is a public hearing, well, pretty much is during. A motion to read the ordinance by Kyle Woldley?
I move to the meeting of Kyle.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner DeWitt, second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries.
An ordinance of the Taylor County Board of County Commissions to amend ordinance two thousand and eleven oh three, Taylor County Code Section forty-two seven seventeen setback, providing severability and providing effective day.
Okay, now, the floor is open for the public hearing, so anyone with a speech will come forward, press your name and address, you have three minutes to speak. Anybody? Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. My name is Babe Wise, with one twenty-three South Alhate Street, all the way to Smolins, South Africa. Here on behalf of Keen Hachy Ancient Eds Property and Airports Association, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this morning. We'll be brief in our recognition, as we all have a long agenda. We are here in support of the amendment. Just very briefly, I think, a little experience with life of an amendment is needed. Back in nineteen eighty, the Ancient Eds subdivision was applied, and applied with approved. As an approved, in the airport community, it was a hundred and twenty-six point eight block, and in nineteen ninety-one, excuse me, and it also had fifteen foot setbacks. Nineteen ninety-one, the planes mass adopted, and it was put into the active planes category, which is ten acre minimum block size, plus fifty front and thirty-five foot side setbacks. Under the law plan, it went all because the lot more recognized as a festival, but that's a lot of that with the setbacks, which means they can practically be filled. So, this proposed amendment would fix this problem by making applicable setbacks for these non-conformity lots, basically the same as these only lots that are similar size. That would eliminate the need for variance of weight, it would prevent potential taking for airplanes, would also enhance industry employment, economic development, essentially for the people, by promoting some smart and desirable growth and development with residential and residential construction, as well as facilitate construction of infrastructure to burn the, to burn the residence. You also could essentially see an increased asphalt or impact in fuel build. This amendment is consistent with Concordant Plan and the Land Development Code. I'm not going to go through all the provisions, I know that the county attorney that's done a great job with putting together a report and identifying some of those provisions. Happy to answer any questions if you'd like, but in closing, we do agree with unanimous recommendation, planning board, to adopt this amendment, and, you know, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chair, officials and staff, my name is Alan Dryson, I reside at twenty-two hundred Bell Drive, Keen Hachy, which is in Hill Care Park. I'm the secretary of the association, property owner association, and I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank the planning board for approving the setback amendment, and the Taylor County Commission for sponsoring the amendment. If this amendment is approved today, hundreds of Taylor County property owners will have room needed for construction on the lot. And I said, thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. If not, are there any comments or questions from the board? Okay, is not a motion to amend and adopt ordinance number two zero one one dash zero three?
How much motion to adopt?
I'll bet it.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Moody, a second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? Okay. If not, we'll have a roll call to vote. Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
The package by United States of the Board. Number four, the board will hold a public hearing that for this date at nine oh ten AM or as soon thereafter as possible on the passage of a proposed ordinance to amend ordinance number two zero zero nine dash eight zero eight, which requires that the applicant designing economic development tactics differ from, show proof that all eligible factors on the property, real equipment, have been paid for the year when the application has been made. We have a motion to read this ordinance by Kyle.
I move.
We have a question by Commissioner DeWitt, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries.
Now, an ordinance of the Taylor County Board, of Taylor County Board, we demand ordinance number two thousand and ninety-eight B rate, Taylor County Code Section seventy-eight thirty-eight, which requests that yet. Applicants designing economic development tactics differ from, show proof that all eligible factors on the property, real equipment, have been paid for the year when the application has been made, providing severability and providing effective day.
They don't show that the application been denied for too, too much of the, uh, ordinance.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, if anyone with a speech will speak, you can come forward and speak at this time. If not, the public, um, the public hearing is closed, and I'll ask for, is there a motion to adopt this one?
Motion to adopt, please.
There are a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call though. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
The package by United States of the Board. Thank you. Number seven, board will hold a public hearing that for this date at nine oh ten AM or as soon thereafter as possible on the passage of a proposed ordinance to allow contractors and citizens to pay fees to dispose of vegetative debris, tree debris, at the county's incinerator site. Is there a motion to read?
Motion to read, aye.
A motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries.
An ordinance of the Board of County Commissions, of Taylor County Board, allowing contractors and citizens to pay a fee to dispose of vegetative debris, tree debris, at the county's incinerator site, providing fees to be set by resolution, providing severability and providing effective day.
Thank you. The floor is now open for the public hearing, anyone with a speech, uh, concerning the hearing, come forward at this time. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Page, in this place, nine oh one, Roll Trust, Keen Hachy. Obviously, I'm one of your citizens, I think, have a lot of the tax revenue that you've been taking from people by you, for benefits of the county in indirect benefits too. The one fee that I pay that is valuable to me as property owner with a small lot, long street, is disposal of the roll off type of, uh, service, or risk for my loss. When you consider your fees, I would urge you to consider raising the hundred and forty dollars as much as you can, looking at who is paying now, look at the handicaps and RVers that are paying less than hundred and forty, and raising your wage that way. Please consider it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, all in favor of public hearing, and, uh, here's from the board.
I'd like to talk about it. Contractors around those counties are ready to pay to, to get their stuff burnt, and they're, they were rather scared to just blow it out there and get it burnt than the, I mean, the, uh, down in the incinerator site to get it burnt and carry it to Greenville. And, I mean, there's no sense in burning that extra fuel, but, but bless them for them to hear, and I'm really, all of them talking to me about it, and they're glad we're gonna be there. And, uh, and I'm like the other gentleman here about the roll off site, a hundred and forty dollars is, we're going in the hole looking at a hundred and forty dollars, we need to go up on that seat, and every campus president in every county that's got a kitchen just like every household, and they, they buying just as many groceries and putting out just as much garbage. When they buy a set of tires and carry them home, they get ready to dispose of them, they have to carry them to the roll off site, and when they buy tires at the store, they charge them three dollars a piece to dispose of, and they keep the money and do it to carry them home, and then we end up disposing of them. So, I mean, we, we got to get down on the roll off side, and, uh, that's where I'm at, is with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, now, this, uh, number seven, um, it says that, uh, on the passage of a proposed ordinance to allow contractors and citizens to pay a fee to dispose of vegetative debris, tree debris, at the county's incinerator site. So, I'm certain that what this means is that the contractors, uh, don't have to go there, but they can go there.
That's my understanding of, of why this ordinance was created, it was, it was a request of the board to allow contractors, to put a method in place for, mainly for contractors, to take tree debris to the incinerator site, and that fee would be set by resolution.
Yeah. And we're gonna talk about the other issues later on in the agenda, what we're getting into, you know, stuff, but now, uh, do we have, um, a fee schedule?
That we will be coming forward with that, that will be set by resolution, so once a fee schedule is set, then it would just be the board will just pass the resolution. And I believe we had a number in mind that we can talk about, when we talk about solid waste operations. And, and I, here, I apologize, I wanted to throw my question on you because I just thought about it. As far as the use of our incinerator, uh, I know we have some monitors that in our emissions testing that we do every year. Is there a limit, is there a point where we would have to limit the?
Our burden, yes, certainly. Um, we have, we tap close to that, so there is a limit on how much you convert. There's respect for ours, but sometimes we gotta cut off in the afternoon, but there's a burden at night, and we kind of touched on that. The key thing you gotta look at with bringing in debris is size, what kind of debris, and how.
You, you come, come forward, can you do this?
I, I didn't, and I apologize, I think I thought that, how to monitor that.
And that's kind of the issue with that, uh, with the burning, I think, melting was involved in that, and we don't have, the incinerator is under a different permit than open pit, or, they can burn later in the evening, but the incinerator, you have to cut off around, make sure it's not out of time, maybe in that position, probably around two thirty in the day, but we still, I think we can stay up with what, what we have, our timing line, with the contractor. I'm not sure how much volume we're gonna get on that, I'm not sure, you know, nobody is opposed to me, but I think that we have to, you know, we can all scale back a little bit if we get too much on the.
Okay, do you want to have a, an operational process, and I understand, you know, that you have to cut it off at a certain time, you mean, that's real clear. Now, if someone does come after that time, or when they do come, do they sit in there till, or do they dump it till, if they come after that time, can they check all the waste, and it's not the next day?
What happens is, if it's green, you got a lot of time to couple, just let it sit for a couple of weeks to dry it out. What, what you're looking at, we'll have a guy there, he stays there till five, 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 three, four, it's open, where they can come in, and, uh, they'll measure the loads and stuff like that, but usually, right now, uh, they would, they would probably have to sit a couple of weeks before we can burn it. We got plenty of room out there, it's just the DP wants you to turn it so much, they don't want it sitting on the ground for a long period of time.
How, about how long?
Well, I think the, the range is that you gotta turn that, I'll have to look and make sure, there might be a six month period they want you, they don't really come out and just, you know, major load, but if we can stay above, you know, like they come in this hearing, and there's a lot of debris, and they come back the next month or come by, and that area's cleaned out, they know pretty well we're handling everything that's coming in, and they kind of monitor us over the years, and they know we're not abusing it, you know, running at night and stuff like that, so they gotta just take, they come at different hours than, you know, this one on the phone, they work.
Yeah, this is my interest in the public interest, and so you have a capacity to burn so much, and that's all you can do, and then, if, if people are ringing this in and leaving it, if you get to the point where you have more than you can handle, they have to, I guess, if somebody pulls up with a big load or something, you have to turn away at that point in time?
We should know a little, we can, like, we know the contractors too, and let's say there's six contractors come in, you know, pretty regular, we can scale them back probably a little bit, you know, there'll be a couple of weeks where you tell them that, hey, we gotta scale back just a little bit, clean this up, we'll leave it a couple of weeks, we'll be back on track. But I, I don't see that as a problem, I think once we can just jump back on it. Now, what happens sometimes when we get into like a hurricane or something like that, then it really puts a lot of pressure on us by their part, but, oh, we got plenty of room out there, we can clear off and get to, you know, they haven't put a stipulation on how much we put out there, it's just, they want us to turn it, turn it out as fast as.
Right, and we're playing, and we don't have to, this year. So, my other question is, um, do you have adequate staff right now to?
We do, we, we got a glitch, we haven't been able to burn in the last four months. Our tractor that we use in Cabota out there, uh, caught on fire, and it's been in a shop for four months, three and a half months, and they're working on it, it has some major damage on it, and it's trying to stop. You know, and you're right, I would take a new one, that one's pretty new, and so, what happened was, I think the sparks got up under there, and, uh, or the electrical damage, they don't, they don't go for sure, but it hasn't really a lot of damage to it, and I think when they were running it, trying to back it off down the hill, they may have pulled in some of the air cleaner positions, you know, into the mortar itself.
So, um, my thoughts would be that now that this ordinance has been approved, that we'll come back to the board, um, and we will request approval of an invoicing system like we presented before, and I think the number that we had discussed is four dollars and ninety cent completed yard for vegetative debris.
That's a big quid, about forty-nine dollars a ton.
Okay, so, um, when we do have, if we pass the ordinance for them, then we still will not have people come in until we get the resolutions done. Just make sure that we, that, I mean, we don't want to overcharge or nothing, but we want to make sure, and I know y'all will.
It's pretty easy.
That we, that there's gonna be.
When we brought it up last time, that's about what they're charging over there, and all you know, it's top.
And you can monitor that, I'm sure, along the way, you know, that's keeping us, uh, keeping our head above water.
We will.
Okay, I appreciate that, so, it's on you, just in time.
Yeah, we gonna have, everybody's a public hour, that it's gonna be, we will, and the day that's gonna be open, and this is, and, you know, and citizens on this resolution here, and contractors and citizens, so you gonna, you gonna have all kinds of different people coming. And that's fine, and I, and I think, I don't think we're gonna see it a lot more, I think, 'cause a lot of contractors are dumping on the roll off site right now, I think we're getting a lot of that debris, I think it's just gonna be where they have the option to come on out and, and, uh, use that facility. Uh, the side thing's gonna cut them back a little bit, as far as the large debris, that they're still gonna have to haul that, you know, you're gonna have to advertise too, that we can't be any contamination in the loads, and you'll have the right to turn it back if they absolutely have a bunch of pretty lumber and, you know, metal in the loads or anything like that. And that, it's nothing we're not doing right now, we can, we can make that work.
Thank you.
If a contractor has the option to go to the roll off site, for free, I mean, you're, they're not really not supposed to, just, contractors, or go over here to the incinerator site and pay for it, you gonna go to the free site, you get by.
Well, I think what we're gonna see is the contractor with a huge trailer that we're not seeing at the roll off site, 'cause we won't let them into that pressure.
So, you'll see that?
Well, see, that's why, I think, they're flipping in with a small trailer, but if they have an option to load a big trailer, time away, they'll run it out, and they're done to get back to the job.
All right, now, the side limit is the same, and incinerator is ten each?
What happens is when you dump a larger log in there, first of all, Cabota isn't designed to dump that, and the incinerator, you don't want to damage it by putting huge logs in there, busting the walls out, but what happens if you put a, a really large log in there, it may burn longer than for the day, and that way the fire doesn't, I don't know why that prescribed time, and that's what we tried to do. And, uh, we, we've got some larger logs in there because we have to clear out trees for, you know, public works course, we have to cut them up in small sections just to get them in there, pack them up, we have to, yeah, the roll in.
You want to leave them in the outside, I mean, I want, so I got to get them out.
And we'll ride them, let them run through, and we'll, we've got pretty well, we know exactly what time to roll out on there.
You, Jim, play it. Well, maybe we can, far enough down the road now, if I'm used to them.
Well, and if, if a contractor wants, I think it gives them option to, I think the money part of it ain't the big issue, I think the time runner for being actually cleared it all, so, about being, make a quick run into town dump and get back down, get back on the job, I think that's gonna be the key.
Get back on the job, I think that's gonna be the key.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, uh, comments or questions, um, is there a motion to approve this one? We have a motion by Commissioner Murphy, the second is one of the second. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, vote aye. Commissioner Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Damp?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes, that's my name, so, thank you.
Consent items eight through eleven A.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Murphy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the time, same time, motion carries. Public request, number twelve. The board should further discuss the donation of property to Habitat and Habitat for the construction of a family home as intended by ten million straight.
Good morning. As you may recall, um, Ms. Chris Myron has appeared before the board, I think twice now, to request the possibility of the donation of a particular lot. Um, it's county-owned property, article zero nine eight five one dash zero zero zero, which is in Beatty. And staff and the county may, um, have reached with our, this particular property. And at our last meeting in January, um, it was basically left with the county may to do some additional research on the value of the property and to ensure that the, um, the new property owners could, um, could pay the tax burden that, that would be associated with this property. Um, the county may, we wanna understand that, um, what, if Myron will need you, or, all your questions have been answered on this?
Well, I want the, the board to know that the value of this property for the last four or five years has been squeezed up thousands of dollars. Make sure that the owner building on there, it's starting off with the value of twenty five, and you add the home to it, and those people of board pay taxes on a house you build on a lot. And I gave them this, we have some more inhabitants, I think it's five, six now, and there was a lot in Beatty. And I gave her that information, so if she wanted to look up that information and see if that lot would be there, it comes like that. Did you look at that a lot?
Uh, yes ma'am, we did, and there is no access to the property, there's, um, plotted no way to it. But it's about three properties in from the nearest roadway or road, um, so it's not really...
Get up on the street, you happen to know about the county, you get that, that's correct.
So in order for us to build, we have to wait till the county gets that.
I just wanted everybody to understand that the value of that property is between about thousands of dollars, and the tax law currently now. The last tax law I had, and those property owners need to know that, I'm not sure that they can base that.
Okay, I wanna ask our, our county attorney, um, for these other lots that, um, are current at this front, what would be the process, um, to, uh, for them to have access to, what would we need to do?
Probably open up, uh, a can of worms there, because if you all recall, the, the, uh, initial, uh, surveying of Beatty lot back in the thirties, there's a lot of quote unquote streets that have run over, been on, on our streets, uh, if everyone is a little familiar with Beatty. So what would have to happen is, um, they, for instance, a lot sticks out with the street that way, then, uh, the board would need to open that up. Uh, there might be some claims of adverse possession against the county with regard to people who, uh, are in close access, or close proximity to those particular streets. So what you're doing, um, can't, it can be done, but you're opening up a, um, Pandora's box.
Okay, so, um, anybody, did you find any other properties other than that one other?
I looked at all the Beatties that we have, that are in Beatty for the county, for the tax sweep project, and that was the only one in Beatty. And I understand that somebody has contributed some funding to this project, and it's got to be, and that's because of that home. But I tell you, that property was coming by at twenty eight, twenty eight thousand dollars. And the home stayed with some twenty five, um...
So you have a home for that, and, uh, you have to, pretty much attack building after that?
Y'all explain that to the, the people that, you know, who know how many of that one?
Well, we, we take all of those things into consideration when we're actually building a house and becoming a house for the homeowner. But we also, as I explained to the county, is that we also, um, escrow their taxes and their insurance to ensure that those taxes and all the services are maintained, the benefit of Habitat, because we are a mortgage holder. We're gonna make sure always the property taxes and the loan making services are maintained.
Well, I...
Your life of loans.
Ms. Chris, but we've got to put all our insurance, blood insurance, and all that on there, so...
So the new homeowner will have a, a, a burden, like, uh, escrow statement. We'll take care of all the insurance and the taxes. So that shouldn't be a concern, because of, because we're gonna have to escrow them out. Having learned all that, five seconds to less, I'm making the motion that we, you know, they did profit.
Let me ask a question. What happens if those people live in that house two years, and some come to a illness or whatever, and they can't make payments on that? What happens?
Then, then, if you cannot be involved, then we'd end up foreclosing all the property and the habitat would...
You mean if somebody else has the block?
Yes, but they have to qualify as a... You know, we have to forelog on the property, then we go on the book upstairs, the office of...
Thank you. Ms. Chris, if it's, if it's you, um, I'd like to see if there's anyone, before we do a motion, I'd like to see if there's anyone out here that would like to speak for or against, uh, this, this issue.
Not yet.
So, so is there, yeah?
I'm Doris Cuthbert, and, uh, I'm with the board of Habitat. This property that, that you're discussing has been sitting there for years and years and years. And we have the money to build a house, but as you all know, property in Beatty is outrageous. And if we have to buy the property, we can't build a house from it. We have a family to qualify, we have the protection that you're concerned about, and we really wish that you would consider. You're gonna be getting tax money, and this thing is gonna be getting a home.
Thank you. The county has owned the property since nineteen forty eight, and Mr. Barrio ran his life, developed something, and he got him that slot, and he's forty eight.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item?
I'm Mary Ann Lawson, also on the Habitat board, and, um, since being on Habitat board has been an amazing thing to watch and see and grow, and for us to get going again for three years, Habitat kind of just, you know, took it out. And even though it's just one family at the time, you consider all Habitat organizations worldwide and internationally. There's a lot of people that does get home, and we do make sure that they qualify to Habitat standards very, very strict. People think they just get a home, but pretty, and they're, no, they're learning, that's not the way it is. And basically, we have to write up the Habitat mortgage holder to set these, um, parameters so that the families can afford to make those payments. And we know in Beatty, taxes and everything is a little bit higher. But, um, I believe that with us working with this family, that, that it would be good, and like I said, like, if something bad happens down the road, we're just like a bank, which I'll be working, so I'm very familiar with what happens. Regardless if it's a bad situation or whatever, the property has to be paid for, the loan has to be paid for, the taxes and insurance has to be paid for. So if something happens and they can't, then, then we can sell the property, take care of everything, and you have a new owner coming in, that you would continue getting your taxes and, and what you're not, you're not actually getting anything on that.
Well, this, I, this is a learning process for me too, because these things I, I was not aware of, so I appreciate y'all educating me a little bit.
It's taken us a while to learn it all too, believe me.
Okay, well, thank you.
We have a pretty good handle on it, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
This is Ford decides, uh, to, uh, to be the property, to be the Habitat, Habitat, right? And so y'all was, uh, giving me the information, so that, can't we, to a county, be a little bit different from the regular, be, you would get in touch with me, or have your attorney get in touch with me?
Any of the laws would get in touch with you.
I'll look forward to it, if I can.
All right, uh, if you'll make your motion, it can be made at this time.
My motion was for the county, to have our attorney to appear of county to be, to donate this property. This is discussed, we're discussing, to have that, um...
I'm second to that, ma'am.
Has a motion by Commissioner Page, the second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the time, same time, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm thirteen, Victor Cora, twenty twenty six, zero, to discuss property with Taylor County to help assure the address of the home. And the board to consider adoption of confirmation, um, we want to do the confirmation of first, um, uh, of the state. Okay, so right now, this, uh, if there are questions, just read the proclamation.
I'm listening, I'm second.
So, uh, my name, Commissioner Giff, second by Commissioner Page, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the time, same time, motion carries.
Partnering with the two thousand twenty census bureau to help ensure an accurate count for Taylor County. Whereas an accurate census count provides our community a resident's wellbeing by helping plan and determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, and public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and keeping an accurate and complete count of the nation's grown and changing population. Whereas more than four hundred billion dollars per year in federal and state funding is allocated to states and community space in part on census data. Whereas census data helps determine how many states each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and often is used for the redistricting of state legislators, county and city councils, and voting districts. Whereas the two thousand twenty census creates jobs, stimulates economic growth, and increases employment. Whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law under Title thirteen U.S. Code. Now therefore, we proclaim that the pair of county board councilmen are committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in two thousand twenty. As a two thousand twenty census partner, we will, one, support the goals and ideas of the two thousand twenty census and stimulate two thousand twenty census information to encourage those in our communities to participate. Two, encourage people in our communities to place a census on two thousand twenty census and participate in advancement initiatives that will raise overall awareness and ensure a full and accurate census. Three, support census papers to help our community complete and accurate count. For all, create or seek opportunities to collaborate with other like-minded groups in our community by participating in complete count committee and or utilizing high-profile trusted voices to advocate on behalf of the two thousand twenty census. Done in order twenty first day of May, two thousand nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, four.
Thank you. Mr. Cora.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Gallery, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you the mission that's read, what our partnership is really gonna look like. But this is about shaping the future of county, and we can't do that without your help. So that, that's what we're asking for on a complete county meeting, because it's made up of trusted voices and stakeholders in the community to help motivate, educate, and engage populations to participate in the renewal of self-healing. As we know, the census, we've been taking the census seventeen ninety, and I can embark on a twenty fourth thing, year in, uh, in two thousand twenty. And the census is primarily used to save power and money. Political power, we can be able to do with the census several years to draw the just lines for congressional representation, state and local representation. And then the other one is the money you have to earn. Your funding that you get for, of our twenty, fifteen, twenty five, or thirty programs, federal programs, are based on the census numbers. The money follows the numbers, doesn't follow the need. You just have to notice this morning, a lot of national transportation, or a segment of our population, that's all based on census numbers. So the more we know of the folks, and the characteristics of the folks that live in Taylor County, the better the outcome is gonna be, and the better input you're gonna have in continuing to build the future of our county. Why we take the census, we take it for healthcare, transportation, future roads, um, and projects embarking on. So it can't go back to saying that the number, knowing that characteristics of our county is very important to be able to satisfy the size of facilities and future needs of the residents of Taylor County. Property confidentiality, we do not share any information that we get from the folks that we enumerate. We, by a census employee, cannot share any information from the rest of our lives we've taken over or refined for stuff of the typical quarter million dollar line for five year old person. The census has not shared any information at all for seventy-two years and one day. All we share is the characteristics of the footprint, and the throughout footprint that we have enumerated. Very important, especially now since the census is gonna be changing and doing something very interesting. Our goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And that means everyone who is on U.S. soil as part of April of two thousand twenty, regardless of status, we will attempt to anyway. That way we can get somewhere accurate and complete count across the country. We're taking a different initiative with the census, that's why it's important that we have this partnership that we're about to embark on with you in our complete count meeting. Because for the first time, the census is gonna allow you to enumerate either by phone or online. If you're old school like me and you still wanna fill out a form, you can call us, we have folks, uh, for twenty-four hours that is gonna be able to send you a form as well. But primarily, we're trying to make, to ensure that we make it as easy as possible for, of the county population. We have to count about three hundred million people across the country. So we're allowing you the opportunity to self-enumerate yourself online or by phone, so, and we are creating the census, online and by phone. And we do that by phone with called complete count meeting. And that is trusted voices and stakeholders of our community, that we know, it's a culture and DNA of Taylor County. We know that people are out, we're engaged in, we're encouraged to participate. Because if we go to our homecoming store, they don't know who we are, they have to, you know, respond to us, but they will respond to you. Madam Chair, the members of the commissioners, and also the folks in the gallery, to participate in, and self-enumerating themselves coming up in the, uh, twenty twenty. We're using a very important tool that's called home, we find obvious area mapping. That identifies to us what are the areas that we believe are gonna be able to, the counties to enumerate, uh, in the county. So when we come back to train the complete count meeting, we will go over in detail what's where in the county we feel that we have to depend on and do a more specific method to encourage the residents of the county to participate. And that is going to be based on the inventory that you already have, what events are going on in, in the county. We have homecoming, the county's there, you know, and be able to share the information with other residents of the county based on where they're at and what it's, it's delivering. So we'll tell the troops living there, whether they're single parents, if they're trying to be as far as renters, uh, are they stable? What the income is, and we'll come up with a strategy with the help of the leaders of the community to be able to deliver the right message to them. to be able to deliver the right message to that segment of the population. And now that you are considering passing a revolution, we actually please pass it, let's get together, let's shake the future of Taylor County up. We are going to be your liaison. All the information has been drafted. All we have to do is add the Taylor County flag to it and get out there and encourage the population to self- enumerate themselves. On the twentieth of, uh, the first of April, two thousand twenty, everyone who's on the soil will belong to the, uh, Taylor County as far as the numbers are concerned. And that's pretty much our, our, our next step. I'm a liaison here, uh, my friend is Evelyn Ramirez, who's also here, uh, who is in this area in Leon County. And we're going to help you craft up the necessary messages to be able to get folks to participate in something that we're focused on. And we're hiring, we're hiring local folks from Taylor County to help us with this process. We start at a canvassing, uh, verifying the addresses, uh, we have a gallery in Luca, uh, you gave us all the addresses that are in the county, we shook them out in our big old basket, and now we have to go out and verify exactly who those addresses are there. So, uh, we start sending out the invitations, we're sending out the county's address. And we need local folks to help us do that. And those good folks from the county that we hired, they are anywhere from twelve to nineteen dollars an hour, plus fifty eight cents a mile to help us with this process. And that's the first major operation, which is at the canvassing that starts in August.
Could you repeat that rate again?
Twelve to nineteen dollars an hour, depending on the geographical footprint.
And how much for the, uh?
Mileage, fifty eight cents a mile.
Federal rate?
They get for?
That's the federal rate.
Yeah, that's the federal rate, because I think that's every month.
Eighty minutes, huh?
Eighteen U.S. citizens, that's all we need. Institute students, schoolteachers, college students, um, they don't matter, because it's a hard time setting out a business. So, you tell us how much you can work, and then we'll work around your schedule. And I'll walk along with a little device, and we'll send you all the addresses that would need to be verified for that particular day that you choose to work. And then you'll verify and send the information back. You got a question, Master Chief?
Yeah, so you, you, you put a schedule. What I'm hearing you say there, you just said, like, this is what, you need to do today, is that how it works?
Based on your availability. If you say, I can work today, uh, for four hours, whatever addresses need to be verified for that particular time period, we will send that information to you. The census will send the information to you. You go verify the addresses, everything you respond, you come out here, you have a tablet around, and you will take the information, and then send it back out. That's the first operation.
Yes, sir. I'd like to end the visit.
You know, I'd like to. When they get out of here, what do you mean, sir?
If he says, no current address, he don't stand.
Right, we're going to say you were blocked with your address, so you to go verify.
That someone is there?
No, that the building is there. The first part is the address, you're verifying that if you, Taylor County says we have fifty thousand addresses. So, now we're going to send folks to verify that there's physical structure at that address. That's the first phase of the operation, which starts in August. And that's going to go through the end of the year. In January, we have a national night for county people experiencing homelessness. Then in February, we start what's called Ruth Quarter Operation, which is enumerating our universities, our progressive institutions, the hospitals, the hotels, uh, they're going to be enumerated in February. So, you'll start seeing some correspondence to make sure that we start that process as far as February. And then, uh, starting on March the twelfth, you're going to get now every resident, ninety-five percent of the addresses across the country will receive an invitation to self- enumerate themselves. And if we don't hear from you around the first or second week in April, we're going to send you another one, I'll have another. And by the end of April, we'll start knocking on the door. We're knocking on the door about four or five times between the end of April, main time frame. And then after that, if we don't get you, we're going to ask you to leave. Now, what's interesting about this, ladies and gentlemen, is that if we draw our efforts to reach out to you, and the only, and the percentage of that particular tribe has responded with it, whatever the majority of the folks that responded in that tribe, that's what the characteristics of that tribe is going to become. So, if I have single parents, families, elderly, in one particular tribe, but the majority of the folks that participate, that respond, are just my single parents, then I'm going to think that that, the census is going to say that that tribe is made up of single folks. That's why it's very important that everyone participates, so that we know what the makeup there of Taylor County. So, when the funding comes out, it'll come down, that will match the characteristics of the county.
Do you provide the media information so that they can, um, you know, help the public become aware of how we support it?
Absolutely.
Is this the Taylor County?
I'll be sharing that, uh, with Ms. Marcia and, uh, with Travis Timm as far as, yeah. The list of the narratives that's been written, our timeline is, we're going to kind of do one, one, only one, and in the right place, another one that we use in the shape, uh, of shaping your future, starting here. So, we're starting here today to shape the future of Taylor County between now and the middle of next year to make sure that every one in the county gets counted, so we have a complete and accurate count. All the narratives have been pretty much written, we just going to add now the Taylor County flag and get the stakeholders and trusted voices of the county involved and help them to sort of work out. We can come in and be standing with a bullhorn in the corner, make sure you, but no one can listen to us. But I know Commissioner Page was out there, he wasn't standing to protect you, Commissioner Maybe, or that may have been. So, we're, uh, right now, we have over thirty-two hundred counties across the country. We're counting a population of over three hundred million people, the largest undertaking we see coming up in the country, embarking. And we cannot do this without your help and your leadership. We need your leadership to be able to help us get it to the county, actually. That's my story, I'm sticking to it. And I think we got.
Are there any other questions for, you know, Victor Cora?
In other words, you're going to provide all the information, but you want the county to do well, you actually, the county got to do. They're not going to hire anybody and put any, put anybody out, it's all, all we're all, all we're.
We just hired a complete count committee, which we did ten years ago, and I, some people like to be in the audience who were on this committee ten years ago. Right, Mr. Ruslan? Remember? You and your wife were on the committee for the twenty-ten census, so we.
We discussed them.
Oh. So, what, we, we'll form this committee, and then we'll ask for a commissioner to be on this committee, and then we basically help disseminate the information out to the public.
Correct. And you do that by just, we'll take a snapshot of what, of what inventory you already have. What partnerships do you have? Who's our largest employer? What social media experience platforms do we have that we can help to have the experience from? I'm saying that, um, career sources is a part of the area, and they have a mobile unit that is a part of the, of the department. So, when we sit down to lay out strategies, we'll look at what inventory we have, what do we need, and who can care for us. Some other counties have, you know, taken some funding out, they're giving about fifty cents per person to be able to buy pens and t-shirts and billboards and stuff like that. But we're going to look at what you already have in place that we can use to leverage that relationship and partnership that we have already with the county. We're going to back up whatever the county does from an outreach perspective, it's going to be backed up in a national campaign starting in January. It's going to be, it's going to be here all the way, but, but don't imagine. Ten years, ten years, ten years. Everything between that, back then, they went around their household and asked how many people live there in that town, right? They're going to do that again. We're going to do that again if you don't respond, if you don't self- enumerate yourself, if that household does not give us the calendar list they start their own recording, then we're going to back, go back after the end of April and start knocking on doors, right there. But we're encouraging folks to self- enumerate themselves so that we don't have to bother you if they're going to knock on the door, right there. And that's why we're hiring the folks in the county to help us do that, yes, sir.
I'm going to ask a question. I don't know to what extent we have a, you know, illegal population. You know, folks who flip across the border, I don't know if we have very many, just kind of give in. But they would be included in the census, though.
Everyone who's breathing on U.S. soil, the first of April, will be counted, for sure.
I think if I were an illegal, I'd be, I'd be, yeah.
Well, see, and that's, and that's a, and that's a very valid point, for sure, because we're just, we're just the snapshot, we're the big oversized camera. And all we're doing is taking a snapshot.
You're not sharing where they are.
Any information, who they are, of all we're sharing is the characteristics of the footprint of our country. So, and those folks that are here that may not have the proper documentation, they're still using the service. And if they live in the county, we use the counter so that you can get your pressure. All we are is the tables of the numbers. And that's it, and that's all we're doing, without sharing that information with anyone, just to result. Any other questions?
Anybody else?
I've heard this before. Always know, just always, and buddy, yeah. Uh, when I heard it, I thought, I was there, and I was thinking, same thing, Mr. Thank you something about. Those that are here, those that, you have something that won't even, don't want to share on the jury, so they don't do the same thing.
Correct.
So, how do you go count them?
Well, because that's also a very valid question. That's where the trusted voices and stakeholders come in. That population looks up for someone for guidance, it could be their faith-based leadership, it could be someone that provides new services from other, you know, from, from other entities. So, we need to find out who those folks are, that are those leaders and those trusted voices for that pop, for that segment of the population, and encourage them, and bring it down to a level where they understand. For example, we are the county of a million children under five in twenty ten. And the reverse fact of that is where are a lot of our students running right now? It may shift flashes of the funding more than they're bringing more children. So, when we bring it down to a level where people understand how this person may defend through, you know, special programs, youth programs, school, that is what we're hoping, that will convince and motivate us to self- enumerate ourselves.
Okay. Newspeak, I thought, I'm on every segment, I wish I knew that. But there are certain segments in the community you don't have, and you pass first one, on street, you don't look at it, they turn to it. Or they turn to it by. Now, I don't know whether they, uh, people do them, if there's a league of activities, or they're running them all, what, how would you get them?
We go back to understanding, for example, in that particular area that you're talking about, who's the leadership there? Um, who's the commissioner there? Who's trusted voice? If there's Ms. Jones in the corner of that particular street, you know, Ms. Smith or Ms. Smith, who's the trusted voice? Every single member of the population has someone that they trust. What we have to do, Commissioner, is make sure that our narrative is shaped to that particular segment. When I talk to businesses, I talk to a lot of them, I speak to government leadership. So, if I'm speaking to a person in the street that may or may not be apprehensive, I have to understand what the makeup and the DNA of that particular block is or that tribe, so that I can come up with a specific narrative for that population. But you encourage citizens to become proactive and report people who might not be willing to enumerate, because they're very, very unusual. For example, if I know the Mr. Biglin, one of these terms, and I know he has a county, because I call him, and I didn't say, he goes, count them, ladies. As a matter of doing that, I would look for who is it that that person trusts, and gets us to convince them to, I don't know if you participate. Because you, you don't, you want to kind of shy away from a negative connotation to what we're doing. All we're taking is a snapshot of our country, and at the end of the day, it's going to benefit everyone who uses the roads in Taylor County, the schools in Taylor County, all the public services. And I want to bring in, you're up. Absolutely not, absolutely not, right? I'm, I'm looking for my faith-based leaders, I'm looking for my educational leaders, I'm looking for my business leaders, I'm looking for the person down the street that everyone goes to and listens to, that may be sitting in a balcony, business and tea. That's the person that I'm going to listen to if I don't have, if I don't trust anyone else, and I just, I'm Mr. Jones, and then something, you need to fill out a census to this importance, in whatever language that they be commissioner, and maybe a folks that I want to engage to participate and be part of this leadership that we're about to run. It's worth that. And the third reason, we're happy about it, we're excited about it, and again, you remember we have to live with the.
Ten years.
Yes.
Does it equal plans to go and speak to anyone else in Taylor County?
As, as soon as, uh, the complete count committee is formed, uh, and Sergeant and Marcia form the committee, and we look at the representation, what infrastructure the county is representing there, and, and then, then we'll tell them, okay, we have this event here, we need to come, we have this event here, we need to come. But once we form the complete count committee, and we take a snapshot, and we plan for the future, then our guidance is going to be led by that particular group, because this is your committee, you're the one that's going to determine what's going to be important and where we're going to need to deliver the Taylor County.
Well, thank you so much.
It was my pleasure. Thank you so much.
Now, do we have a card? You have a card or a card?
Yes, the cards are inside my package that I blessed with you, there's all the single information there about enumerating people who are in the home, listening. If you look on the left-hand side, you'll go down, and you'll see Taylor County, what your, uh, response was in two thousand.
They did, down low?
Correct, so we need to, we want to make sure that we improve that number.
Yes.
We improve that number, and follow me, Master Chief. Do we need to print this proclamation?
Yes, we do.
I'm listening.
Can you make that one?
Yes.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Please, Master Chief.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bill, Detective Master Commissioner Page. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Good morning, thank you, and a fortunate work with you.
Thank you.
Good old, you have a service.
Adam fourteen, the board to consider appointment of a replacement commissioner to the Taylor Coastal Water and Water and Sewer District water commissioner as identified with that sentence, Taylor Coastal Water and Sewer District office then. Um, this, this position, uh, has been vacant since March of this year, and we have two applicants, Steve Bradley and Cheryl Milford. We're handing out the ballots, you know, and we'll just mark it, and pass it down to the community official. What's his name on? And I'd like to say that, um, these documents are held by, uh, clerk in her office. And if you need to see, these, you can fill them out with speed, where you can go over to your, or your summer office, and fill in them. Everything is colored.
You may need to do this, sir. Okay?
Yes. And Paul, you tell me, like, will this go on to the next, is that how we do? Okay, we'll come back when he's ready, we'll, right now, we'll go to county staff office number fifteen. The board to consider refusal of new job destruction for on-call fire inspectors and to reclassify a current on-call fire fighter position as a designated by chief.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um, just a quick update on this, as we talked about, we need to do a little more work on our fire inspection. Um, so, we went back as fast as try to figure out how can we achieve that without doing, you know, costing too much, and maybe to see how far we can get with it. So, we have a vacant, um, on-call firefighter position right now. So, what we would like to do is approve this new job script of fire inspector, and then reclassify that current on-call firefighter into this newly created fire inspector. Um, the pay grade was set off of the, um, the pay study that was already completed, so it's already in there, so we went to debate it, um, the base paid off of the base now, keep playing the study to, to keep.
Okay, now, is this, um, a position that we deliberately not feel, or we've been actively trying to fill it in, come to your vacant, um?
We, we've got three that are vacant right now. We just still, or we're sending out an offer letter to one person for one of them. Uh, we're going to do some more testing on one more for another position. But it was one of those, we kind of balanced the need of, do we need that third firefighter versus do we need that new fire inspector? So, we'll still have two on-call firefighters. So, we're gonna weigh up the pros and cons there. Um, and I, I think it's more important to have that, that fire inspector. We, we get somebody who's still certified as a firefighter. We could still use them in that capacity as a firefighter, even though they're, they're an inspector.
And Mr. Anderson, you're in agreement with this?
Yes, because this will, this, we already have the funding. And then, I know, um, you have, the fire chief is presently, um, handling performance inspections. We have another lieutenant who is in training to be fire inspector. So, this was hopefully a possibility so we can, um, so we can continue to, to have them.
With our current funding, they get rid of it. The on-call position, we're running for about sixty-two days for a city fire inspector. So, a little over a day, we, we arrange a meeting to help do some fire.
Is there a motion to approve?
Go ahead with that.
Is there a motion for Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Lee, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stand aside. Motion carries. Um, if we should, the board should consider awarding this for the rehabilitation of one home and demolition of construction of three homes through the community development block by a CDD program and consider approval of exceeding the ordinary cost limit for the ship local housing assistance plan, LSST, and the CDD housing assistance plan due to the rising cost of construction as intended by Sammy Booth, the grant coordinator.
This is actually, um, to award this for the re-habilitation of one home and the demolition and construction of three homes through the CDD program and then three homes demolition and construction through the CDD.
And we, um, received the bids at, um, May the sixth meeting. And at that time, when all the players that, um, for the, they were related or not, that were in the area were... Um, the bid committee has recommended the following bids awards. The ship rehabilitation, um, Conradal Cook to certify roofing and construction ink for twenty-five thousand. Ship demolition and construction, Haven Homes to Jerry Walters Construction, ink for seventy-nine thousand nine fifty. Thomas Dixon to Jerry Walters Construction, ink for eighty-one thousand nine fifty. Laura Campbell to J. G. Parker Air Force, ink for ninety-five thousand eight eight eight. CDD demolition and construction to James O'Neil to J. G. Parker Air Force, ink for seventy-nine thousand eight eight eight. William Walters Davis to J. G. Parker Air Force, ink for ninety-five thousand eight eight eight. Gerald Faulkner to J. G. Parker Air Force, ink for ninety-six thousand eight eight eight. Uh, so, um, is there a motion to approve, um, the, uh, bids to the ones that I just called off?
Oh, to approve?
I think, I think the motion needs to say, and to approve exceeding the ship's...
I'd like it to approve and to approve exceeding the limits. And I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
I think, that, that I recall the last several months that we've done this, that we've, because it's cost a few trucks. That we've always had to exceed the limits. I'm asking, is it permissible for us to change the limits?
We can.
Rather than each time having to exceed the limits.
Um, just saying that these are actually our last three homes for the CDD program. We'll be closing out the plan. So, the next time that we apply and we do an in-house assistance program and the construction costs are still high like they are now, we can change that amount. And we can amend, um, our house assistance plan for the ship and land home to change.
But first, I'll see, yeah, we thought I'm gonna take a look at that. That's, that's my comment.
Well, the next program, uh, coming soon, but, um, if we are awarding our ship money, we should be getting that in August for the next, how, how, because we're actually having to accommodate all our funds to this stage.
Yes.
Yes. CDD, we will have to finish these, uh, and close out the plan. And we'll have to wait, um, probably towards the end of next year, we'll be able to do a five for the CDD program again.
Okay, I know someone that has a mobile home that's in the sea. And it's, it's been really being some assistance. When, what program was that under in you?
In the city, when that was the ship. But the ship had a knowledge to do anything with other ones.
So, there's no other reason. So, why would you... Why isn't it grounded to, I mean, why doesn't it cover city and county? Why, why is it...
Well, ship does cover city and county. CDD is only, um, they, they don't do anything to be around it.
Oh, the city's probably seen you, remember?
Um, they can apply for it.
So, what can this person do?
I don't really know.
They, I don't think, they, they need to do a legacy program and actually do work for mobile homes. They need, you don't have to own it. You can be a renter. Um, but I don't think that they...
It's a lot of young, old as hell. I mean, uh, well, you know, maybe they want, you know, the board advertised fifteen blocks of land with CDD. And we got three deals. Is, so, see, the people who apply for those programs have on the books. Um, or can you look at some of these tracks the county's got? Because we did sell, they're, they're in the county's name. Is using one of those lots to deal with a ship or a CDD home.
Well, right now, for our demolition and construction, they are requiring you actually be a homeowner, um, and have a home that can be demolition. But, um, we, we have talked about the next time that we do our ship housing plan to hopefully consider including mobile homes for demolition and construction. Because we do have a lot of applicants who need to be in all of the counties that have mobile homes.
Well, I think so, because the people that I know, uh, the, the man, he works, he works sometimes seven days a week. He works, one of our little honest persons, uh, his lot has, um, uh, some security guard health issues. And, uh, they're doing their very best they can, but their home is almost not livable, but there's nothing else they can do. These are the kind of people that are working good, hardworking, honest people that really need help. And just the concept of living in the city, uh, to me, is just not an excuse to help them. So, you're in a position, if you, you know, go back for people like that, they need, need the help to think, "Oh, I'm doing that." These people need help. And, and maybe other people like them.
And I guess that we have to consider, thank you, because I can't say how many people I've found calling and they have a mobile home and we can't do anything.
Yeah, but they should be included because they live in a mobile home because that's all that they, they can afford. And so, um, yeah, any way that I can help or this one can help in support of that, then please let us know. Okay.
The city doesn't facilitate the, they, they won't do it, they're not doing it, yeah?
Um, the city has a vital CDD program, but it's meant to revitalize the damn town.
Yeah, the other thing doesn't have.
Certainly, they have several, they, yeah, they...
Those are the stuff that they can't fund, they, they, CDD, CDD platform, that, yeah.
So, they, they have several different projects, you know, parks, I think mainly maybe it's, um, revitalizing downtown and construction.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a petition. I hope we're never too late. And, um, we don't, we didn't, okay, so, this is how we started, didn't we?
Well, I'll let you know. We approved this list of apps. And, and also approved team, isn't it? Is that what we need?
No.
And I'll play it down, Mike.
I think we should have been following the...
Okay.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Beal, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stand aside. Motion carries. Thank you. All ready to relax to number fourteen?
Me.
Yes, um, now, it's, uh, Steve Bradley.
Steve Bradley. Okay, is there a motion to appoint Steve Bradley to the Taylor Coastal Water and Sewer District Board of Commissioners? Okay, I think so. We have a motion, multiple commissioners, second by Commissioner Beal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stand aside. Motion carries. Article seventeen, the board should consider picking up a cooperative agreement between the county and the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, for a grant in the amount of eight million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents for the railroad rehabilitation project as intended by Melody Cox, grant director.
Melody cannot be with us. She is, she has been working part on the project remotely. Um, and this is to approve basically the grant agreement with FRA. Um, our attorney will be speaking later on in the meeting about deciding agreement between the board and the FRR to facilitate this project. This is for the actual grant agreement. And if the board approves this, then, um, Mr. Phil will log into a portal, approve the grant, and we will certainly have a hold on it.
You secure our connection? Is it approved?
Yes.
You confirm this is the right thing to do? Yes, sir. We, we never, if something involves like a million dollars, unless I ask you question. Without time.
Right, but this, uh, this, uh, I read that carefully. And I just will not cost the county any money if the finding agreement is...
It's approved.
Between, um, Georgia Florida Railway and Georgia Pacific.
Right, ma'am. It's, it's not, Georgia Pacific is not a partner in this and we need to correct our language on this. So, the agreement is between Georgia Florida Railroad and the Board of County Commissioners to hold us harmless and not to, not to utilize any of our funding for this project. So, we are basically to pass through agency or, you know, for, for FRA.
There's two agreements today, okay? So, we're, uh, mixing them right now. First agreement is with, you know, uh, for the grant, which is eight million dollars. Almost, uh, over eighty-five, over eight million. Six hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Okay, that's the grant, okay? That, the second agreement is an agreement with, uh, Georgia Florida Railroad, which we explained before is a, what we call a pass-through agreement. And that's the one I've been dealing with Mr. Williams, that he was an attorney from Holland Knight in Jackson. Holland Knight. Okay, all right. So, the first agreement, I sent him, and y'all have seen the copies where I wrote the letter, saying that, you know, this, uh, I, uh, what I was thinking was that, that said that we would do it in this place, why make it into a good place? Um, and then we had several questions from our grant coordinator, Melanie Cox. And, uh, I sent that to Mr. Williams, and Mr. Williams got a lady by name, Mrs. Bosco, I believe it was.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Beth Bosco, also DC office, responded to it, saying that what we're doing here is illegal. And what it is, is all we are is a conduit or a pass-through. And they have agreed any agreement, if you look at what I asked them to do, if there's a mistake, they hold us harmless with regard to that. Hopefully, there won't be any mistakes. I'm, I'm doing my thing right now, um, what, what number is it? What number is it?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Okay. So, let me just read you what I wrote to, um, to Wanda and Amy May on May the sixth, uh, Dear Amy May and Wanda. And you were aware I've been corresponding with Mr. Scott Williams, attorney of Holland Knight in Jackson, who represents DFRR, that's Georgia Florida Railroad, and has a mix, and he's your resident, and has amended the agreement with DFRR in Taylor County. Pursuant to the letter I sent, Mr. Williams on four-four nineteen, reading me, I closed another copy. Mr. Williams sent me the enclosed copy attached today, Wednesday, May first, two thousand nineteen, with an amended agreement. Mr. Williams kindly made the changes that I requested. And by copying the letter, Mr. Williams invited me to send me a clean agreement, and I just requested that you put a clean agreement on the agenda for the next regular meeting, uh, for the board to consider. Um, get a question, let me know. I've been looking for that clean agreement in my files. Because, and what I mean by a clean agreement, the agreement he sent me has underlined and is red, you know, with the change and so forth. So, I wrote down his phone number because I looked and I haven't gotten that clean agreement yet. And so, I was gonna call him when I get to talking to y'all, so, you know, emailing you the clean agreement. Then on May the fifteenth, see, um, I wrote to Wanda and said, "As you recall, Miss Melody Cox raised some questions. I in turn sent them to Mr. Scott Williams, who's from Holland Knight in Jackson, Florida. Three final closing emails he sent me on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Also, I received a letter of opinion from attorney Mary Beth Bosco, also Holland Knight, Washington DC office. Will you review this and send it to me?" Frankly, I think the questions are answered. Thank you, that's a good sign. So, I think the questions were answered by Miss Bosco, who deals with this kind of thing every day. Of course, everyone who's in the county, in, uh, our staff, our attorneys, getting there was about eight minutes, you know, like I told you when this first came up. So, that's why we did all the questioning, and Melanie did the questioning, and then we got the response. The long and the short of it is, if he sent me a clean copy, an email to sue us, um, I recommend that you just sign it and let's get going with, pardon the tongue, uh, with this railroad, um, track, see, uh, from, uh, from Adele.
There.
So, I think, you know, you know, and it bothers to talk, you know, views that kind of committee in here. But I just think that this is something that, um, um, that we're gonna be okay. Um, and for now, I'm only in town. But, uh, I think we're gonna be okay and, and it's a boon to, to everyone in our, in our community. I mean, I can't foresee, uh, too many people objecting to it, to that, to that. So, that and mine, I'm gonna excuse myself and call now and ask him to email it to my office and then I'll get it to you, you, sign it, give y'all approval of it.
Okay, is that the written document you took?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have a clean copy of it, yeah.
I don't have it, see.
So, then you need to take a, this is on the twenty-two, do you get that from him?
Well, that's why I'm gonna call him right now and, and tell him to email it to my office and then we'll, um, bring it down. So, you need to both sign and contingent on getting a clean copy. That would have helped me on that one. But you got two things to do.
Right.
First one is to see the grant. And the second one is to be agreement with Georgia Florida, et cetera. And I'm gonna, y'all excuse me for now, I'm gonna sit by and call Scott Williams.
We appreciate you being real with us, we're there. Thank you.
It's scary.
I know.
And if I may, just take this opportunity just to, um, so everyone remembers, we have many moving pieces with this project. But our role is to execute the grant agreement. And then our staff will work within the grant portal to request reimbursement for invoices and things like that. We are currently advertising for CEI services. That is the, um, construction oversight and grant oversight are based on the ground when the track work starts. and to make, to protect us and to protect the project. Um, Georgia Florida Rail will be hiring the track work contractor, that's what some of the conversation was about, to make sure that we all within, um, the, the CFR, um, the federal regulations by allowing CFR to do that. So, um, so we all will be working together very closely to ensure that, this is a fifty-fifty grant, that, um, Georgia Florida Rail is reimbursed, so that we will be the pass-through for all the funds, um, that are in progress in this project. If that helps.
Yes, sir. Then, um, in Washington, Congressman Dunn, obviously, we tell him that he's responsible for, they named him, I think.
Yes, sir.
So we need to give kudos to Congressman Dunn, obviously.
Yes, and, and Mr. Landen is here.
Okay.
Yep, we appreciate it.
Yes. So, this is, this project is starting to pick up steam for a while. But, you know, growing the ball, which is why we're all anxious, this is new to us, it has a lot of moving pieces, um, it's quite complicated, but I would say that we are, that we are ready to embark on this project. So, in June, um, we received a bid for the CEI services, and that will be something that, um, that the board has to go over. And then it's just a matter, once the project gets started, I think it will move very quickly, um, but considering we've been talking about it for two years, really.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to give you an opportunity to come forward and, and pick up the ball. We appreciate you being here.
My name is Landen Hoffman, I'm a regional director for Congressman Lou Dunn, um, he did have our, made department give him a review of the O P. And of course, Congressman Dunn, uh, was going to do anything he can for you guys, stuff in D C. And, uh, he did try, that he, uh, he did for the, he would love to come down here, come do the finals, and, uh, take pictures, get in, get a fight, and see all the people, or, uh, county, and, uh, Tom, right here, Del Hauzey, and I come up here, talk to him, and he loves to, uh, he would be there for you, or, you know, if you want him to be, it's, it's a good, it's important, so, so. But we're the worst, we're-
Well, it's not the issue, it's, it's very nice, thank you. Okay, so, uh, if there are no other questions?
I just gave him all the time, I left him after John, and voicemail, I'm leaving my phone on, he calls me back, but I did tell him enough, he emailed to me right away, so.
Okay, well, that's all I did.
And I'll get it to, uh, Wanda and Mr. Sam, and then-
Thank you.
So if my phone rings, don't kick me out.
Okay, so, but right now, is there a motion to approve, to approve the cooperative agreement between the county and the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, for a grant in the amount of eight million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents?
It is, but-
Okay, we have-
We can get some, whatever we need to, to get it going.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second vice commissioner Muggins, any further discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, motion carries. I think what I'd like to do is, we'll just wait on twenty-two, if they have a call, then perhaps what we'll do is we'll, um, we'll do a motion, get contingent on, so, okay, item number eighteen. The board can consider reappointment of two members to the San Diego County Planning Board as presented by Danny Griner, building up his own. The two are, that, we should remain, are done with papers and all, has there a motion to reappoint these two members?
Ma'am, sir.
Yes.
Anybody got their pen? Is there a pen or a regular review order?
A part, I know, it's super recommendation by Danny.
I moved, we approved the recommendation, our building official was tried, and we reported, I didn't even did something, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second vice commissioner Kemp, any further discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, motion carries, I'm nineteen. The board can further discuss solid waste operations as presented by Gary Walholt, environmental services director.
I'm the paperwork man, we're just doing a follow-up, which we got to ask for. And basically, I did some assessments, that you can see that, A through I, and I did do the cost of the, uh, scale. And still, it varies on what you're looking for, of yours, that's got above ground, frame type around sixty-five grand, and then the in-ground concrete, and they can run up to a hundred and ten. But, with this here, what I, what I'm trying to get across, if we go up on the, uh, assessments, the only thing I need to, for you guys to think about is, on the loads, how, how many can a person bring into the site per day? That's what's killing us, too.
Okay, first of all, would you, if you don't mind, would you please, because I thought that was very interesting, the survey that you did of other counties?
Okay.
Would you please ask, well, just because everybody's reminded why everybody don't charge?
Okay, this, this is assessment, I just hauled around trying to get people, or counties kind of similar, close to, or whatever. Franklin County, they take household only, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
A year.
A year. Uh, City of Perry, two twenty-eight, household only. They do curbside, and I think they do a monthly pickup on the, on, in the city. Calmoo County, two twenty-seven, household only, they do curbsides. Madison County, two twenty, household only. Walco, one ninety-six, household only, curbsides. Uh, Columbia County, one ninety-three, household only. Liberty County, one ninety-two, household only. Dixie County is one eighty, household only. Jefferson County is one seventy-five, the one, two twenty-four, and they ran out of money the last two years, over, I think she said, they're probably going back to two hundred, oh, yeah. Hamilton County, they charge by the hundred pounds, three dollars and fifty cents, and we're at one forty, and twenty counties at one thirty, household only. And the majority, I think, all of these only take households only, and what, and they do have options like scales, a, a facility where they come in there, if they have any, uh, any other debris, the, the majority only take household only.
Okay, thank you for that, what, the, the, I wanna ask you, Miss Timerson, what do we have to do if we decide, say we wanna go to two hundred dollars? You know, most of these people are over two hundred, what do we have to do? I know that we, right now, can go to, let's raise it to one fifty-four?
There's a one, there's a cap of one fifty-four, per our ordinance, the fees are set by resolution, if I'm not incorrect, Mr. Comrade, but to go up that high, I think you would, you would need a major ordinance.
Okay.
Is, is that correct?
We're, we're lagging way behind.
And I, my understanding was that, when this ordinance was passed, which was over ten years ago, maybe twelve, that the, the initial thought was, instead of a one forty, for it's only the households, to stop C and D and probably vegetative debris, and every year, maybe go up a little bit on that assessment, till you got to the one fifty-four. And I don't believe it's been raised since then.
Hasn't been raised.
And that's been probably, well, you-
Well, we've got a lot of issues to consider, um, Mary Beth, um, um, had one question of how many, uh, houses don't let somebody come? After talking about household, but, they're not gonna come, but one time a day, so I'm sure you're referring to limbs and things like that. Uh, and I know last meeting, my concern was that, just like Mr. Uh, uh, uh-
Yeah.
Rich, rich way, you look, uh, if, if you're cleaning up your yard, and you got a few tamarisk limbs down, or, or, you know, you take that, I don't want to have any charge taken for that. If they cut down a seventy-five foot, uh, pine tree, or a hundred yard tree, there, to me, that's, that's different. Because that does impact our bottom line, right?
It does, I think we can, if we decide to charge at the roll-off side, we can work in a clause on that, to make it look, like, you pull up there with a pickup, and it's full of, uh, leaves and a little bit of yard debris. I think that should be excluded, I don't even think we should charge for any of that. I'm talking about the guy that's bringing the C and D, and just bringing in a truckload of land higher than the cap, that's what we need to look at. Third, and you're right, the person that's bringing in the tamarisk and all that, they're not impacting this like, that's just normal stuff to me. And if we decided to just exclude the pickup sides, and just look at the trailer sides, or something like that, we could work around that if you think about charging at the roll-off side. I, I think, like, they just say, they clean up their yard once a week, that's, that ain't killing us.
Well, my concern too, and I think there's concerns of others, is charging at the roll-off side. I, I see a lot of, of major concerns with that, you want, so, you don't, you don't want your roll-off attendants handling money for safety reasons and those others, and then if you, we discussed, if we have some sort of, um, ticket, and it goes to the clerk's office, and then that, um, that, um, puts a, a, a greater load on them to handle all of that, and so, I don't know the answer, I'm just telling you my concern. Um, the one, it's easy for your department, and the one, we don't wanna burden the, the clerk. Now, not only talk about, um, a lot of the C and D, um, somehow, whether we need to make sure that the public knows that they can rent these, um, dumpsters, uh, and then, once they rent the dumpsters, and they take it to Greenville, is that the way it goes?
What it is, is there's, uh, environmental, we've had a lot of, and it's west of here, if they're tearing down a building or something like that, they can rent these, and they can pick them up, haul them up, and then-
They can, okay, okay.
The key, the thing we're having trouble with, is people are trying to get into sites to not have to pay for the containers and all that, that's where we're running. When they bring a multiple load, let's say on Saturday, we clean the site up for the weekend, and let's say by Sunday, ten o'clock, a person's brought in five or eight loads of debris from a building or whatever, then I have to send a truck driver out, and we'll pay an overtime on that. And this doesn't happen every week, but it happens a lot, every couple weeks, we have to do this. Sometimes I get called on Saturdays and Sundays, but I say, every other week, we get called up, and, and then people just bringing in normal stuff, it, it's, we're getting slammed by one person usually sometimes.
And your suggestion, then, to fix that?
I, well, I don't know, and I'm throwing this out, if we go up on assessment, that, that's gonna generate more money, of course, but we're still not controlling the roll-off by the cars, how many loads, if, if that same person slipped in there, that they got a card, and they're, say they're not a contractor, we can't prove it, but they're bringing in multiple loads, I don't know how to stop that unless we charge them, and make them have to pay for what they are generating, I don't, I, I don't have that answer.
And are you, I know you're giving us a lot of thought, are you suggesting that they pay the roll-off attendant? Or how, what are your suggestions?
I think like we did the ticket thing, I, and I, and I don't know, everybody, in a prior meeting, you said you think we could make that work?
Well, I don't know, 'cause I don't know what you're thinking about, and how we're thinking about doing it, but I would hope that y'all, this board will never go back to collecting fees at a roll-off.
No, I, I-
You know, we have a problem with, we're quips, uh, every year we have a, for, same rate.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna handle that one.
So, you don't want the roll-off attendant to do that, or?
Well, my idea on the ticket thing was, that we generated at the roll-off side, and it's just check wherever, and they get the information. We take it to the office, and we do it like we did code enforcement when we were learning it, we do a master sheet, and we turn it in, and they give me the ticket. That's what we did in the past, and I think code enforcement worked out pretty well when we did that.
Well, you run that through code enforcement, because if you run this course, then, you have to run it through code enforcement. So, we would need to sit down and look and see what kind of workload it's gonna cause for us to do this, because if you have that person that carries a large load of debris to the roll-off side, and that roll-off attendant's gonna say, you can't dump that, because you have to pay, you gotta have a way to give your ticket, and you've got so many things to bring that in that ticket. The copy would need to come to us, so we would know that when the-
We'd know the master sheet was the ticket, and we would, we would do that, then.
If you don't have the work, that's the honest work there is involving people. Yeah, and, and you know, with the, with the, um, the, uh, code enforcement with the boat round, that's real cut and drop. I mean, if you're, if you don't have a pick, a picker, you get a ticket and it costs as much. But, but your, our situation was this, it's a little more subjective, but it needs to be-
I think we could structure it where, we have to take some of the workload from Annie May, and when I say that, if, if she says, well, we, we don't have the time to generate this part, or can you help mail this out, or what can you do, I think we can help her with that. Now, it doesn't mean we, down the road, we may have to tweak this a little bit to make it work, I think the, the, I think it's workable, I think it's gonna take a lot of effort initially to get it up and running, I think if we got it running, I think it'll flow pretty well. And like I said, the big thing is, I do not wanna handle any kind of money or anything like that, that's, that's crazy. I think if we can work it this way, and look at, if we, if, do this, come back in three months, six months, and just see how it is working. If it ain't, we can pull the plug on it, and just find out, I mean.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, uh, we have a, uh, four members, Steve, but I know you've spent a long, I hope that we've spent a long amount of time on this, and I appreciate what you've done, uh, and let's try to get it as close to being as true as it can be to begin with, and we may have to come back and tweak it, but, you know, that's, the less we have to do that, the, the better it is. But people say, you said that, maybe send this, and maybe, you know how, you know how, so, I'm, uh, anybody else?
I'm willing to stick my neck out, seeing just where I am, I'm finished. A lot of time here, just like you have, in discussing some of my thoughts, wouldn't say anybody, probably, you know, approach this time, and I talk, and I, I take. I've had this wonderful revelation. Um, first of all, I think that all recognize that in solid ways, we've got to generate some more residents, or else we've got to reduce the service. I am not for going back just to household garbage at the roll-off side, because for what, fifteen years or more, our citizens have gotten accustomed, and Mr. Smith, they have to carry their guardrails there. If you've got an old couch, or an old bucket chair, you can take it to your roll-off side. Pick it over there, if you haven't been charging, I think the simplest thing to do, with the less, you know, adverse reaction from the citizenry, is to increase the solid waste, which I'm willing to, to do that, reasonable number. Keep the services best to be the same. I don't, I, I do not have the right answer for what you do with people who bring in multiple loads of C and D, mainly house demolition material, that's where it mostly comes from, the whole load.
And it, that's coming in, and yard debris, we're, we're getting hit by both sides, yard debris and that. But also, like, let's say, a mother, father pass away, and their kids come in, and they clean the house out. Like, one time, we ended up with, like, twelve mattresses, you know, and these people out. And, and that's what we're up against, for multiple loads, killing them, man.
If, if you don't provide this service for the benefit of the whole community in the county, what we're gonna have is a fill-over effect, if these folks, residents, who rent that, about six hundred dollars, rent that can that you have, put in your yard, to throw all that stuff in, and it can't be instantly hired at the top of the can, or they make you take some of it off for Georgia building, you're gonna wind up with this debris back to the- You're gonna wind up with this debris, back to the refrigerator, construction debris scattered all over this can on a shoulder of our highway. And all over the woods, it's gonna be awful. So, it's all a matter, it will increase in stuff. To a certain point, and the logic there, you can do the numbers for us. In this, we would need to deal with the RV situation. Uh, I'm going to look at it. It's, right now is the RV paying one-third of the hundred and forty dollars. Which is already very, very, very low. Point it out. Every RV has got a ticket, gets you just like everyone else, like everybody else. I, you wouldn't believe this, but I met a citizen who called me recently and said, the answer to this thing is charge RVs just like you charge the house. Go on and just do it. You're gonna have two hundred people that are complaining about it. And if you don't do anything, you're gonna have two hundred people that are complaining about it. So, go ahead and do what's the right thing. So, uh, I, I don't have an answer what to do with multiple loads. Go ahead. How many of these do you have?
A bunch.
A bunch?
A bunch.
Well, you, uh, that goes back to the, to the scale video. We can't afford to buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a heavy roll off site. We've got eight. Now, how long would it take a million dollars to buy nine sets of scales to weigh it out there? That's another, this is a few tax fair money, my, and I think we probably wouldn't do that. And if you say, we're gonna buy two sets of scales, we're gonna put one in C and H one and K two. Well, that's not fair to the rest of us in the county. You gotta holler, one way or the other. So, the scale idea, because we've got these multiple sites. To me, it's not the answer. I mean, to rich, that'd be great. So, it's a tough decision, but the bottom line is, entire responsibility of the board is to make solid ways to hold. Or else cut the services and I don't see the basic services cut. Now, if we weren't a center, house full garbage, yard work, it just, you didn't say, we don't take any C and D. Then you go back to this problem about there gonna be nothing in the woods and on the highway. So, to me, that doesn't meet our needs. Building system, I don't want us to go into the building system and create a whole new bureaucracy and have five people to collect and do all the invoice. This is quite convenient, just to increase the fee enough that you let them hold. So, you don't have to come back each year, year to budget year and ask for another fifty thousand tickets and fees. That would be simple all year, doable, I think. If they're roll off sites, our citizens would better understand it. It's not gonna like any, any piece of C and D, but it's often taking here, speaks for itself. You know, they're already carrying it up. So, I ran along with them, I don't care. I've kinda got my mind made up that we gotta do something. And I'm willing to, to take the hard look at increasing fees and stuff.
I concur. Anybody else?
I'm willing, I'm just, you Malcolm on that. We've got to do something. We've gotta do something.
Can't keep going, oh, I, the only thing that bothers me about what Gary's saying is that multiple load business, when you got somebody that's gonna carry down free chicken houses for a hundred and forty dollars and they're every piece of chicken houses to our dumpster. And then we have to pay forty dollars a ton at the slam day. It's just, even if we go up on sale, it's not gonna touch care of stuff like that. We've got to have a handle on, I wanna go up on it where we can afford to do it, but I wanna, I wanna get a handle on that multiple load business. I, I'm just glad for the do that.
That's, that's the thing I respect a little bit, you know. The multiple loads. North of that, we saw the, the one, if you done any credit, something or nothing yet. But I had one thought about when you come to get your ticket, that you get, uh, say, get a little ticket. That kick out rather than you can't offer it during the year to visit them, the C and D.
Yes. And if we could quantify that into, you know, a lot of it or a fragment or whatever.
One, one driver and one trucker.
Right.
That takes one of your tickets.
Yes.
And then next month, you reach for your little all roads, your gloves, your pocket, and you take all the others. Or if you wanna use the ball pin and one way in. But that, that would eliminate it. So, if they're gonna shut up, and I got the ticket.
And still gonna go in the woods.
And, and it's still gonna go in the woods. Or they're gonna call the commission, cause they wouldn't let me tell it, cause I lost my ticket.
That seems like too much.
Too much, too much paperwork.
What if, what if we had one site, plant my site down in Colton Cemetery? If we set it up, one site with scales like all three of them. I mean, people like Shady Grove can drive, if they're gonna pay at my site, they could pay, they could drive a green bill either they could come back, you know?
I'm not, okay, I'm not interested in scale. Uh, but I would hear from other citizens.
Okay. What I think the situation is solved with this, and with the pay to play program here is if we put the responsibility over on the tax payer, okay, and then a criminal person comes in and dumps their debris. Are you saying that I'm gonna be able to dump a ton of debris for a hundred and fifty bucks? So, that's putting excessive pressure on the taxpayers. If a person is gonna conduct a business, you can pay control. If you're gonna dispose of any kind of dirt. So, the hundred and forty three dollars, is that somewhere?
Hundred and four.
Hundred and forty. That's going to pour out all the debris, okay? Now, if I'm gonna pay and pay half the garbage, why should I pay for a commercial activity, for a donation box at all the different places? The pay to play program is legal. This day, mine day counts. Look it up. Pay to pay. If we're gonna raise taxes, let's do it for the children or let's do it for the person's body? Does that make sense to you? But if we don't charge, pay to play, the burden of the property and the burden of taxes, that's gonna create a big situation. So, I'm not for raising taxes at all, unless it's for a person's body or children. If you pay to play, that's gonna solve that problem. Question I have for Ann and me, how many employees do you have in the first office?
Twenty-three.
We should be able to handle this.
Not necessarily, no. You know, I've turned.
Twenty, twenty-three, that's.
Well, that's in the whole department. A lot of the school people, they can handle the stuff. The only people that can handle that would be the recording department downstairs, who would.
Three people. Three people. Okay. So, I'd say one people and three people aren't gonna be able to take that down.
They're, they're, if you didn't get into the science, that, that's, that's where we did the uh, the button. And we, we also play them, we know all them, so they look like.
And you're fluid in those departments. Are you finding any in the strip? Do they have any employees now?
Maybe, cause we'll have to break that.
But that's not, if I can interpret, this is a totally different volume today. Because the animal is just to, to explain the thing they go down control. That's strictly for fees and fines for animals and bull. And I don't know, how many, how many of those do you think are generated a month?
See, I, I don't know, because see, the fayan and neutering, they have to come pay those fees and all four of these adoption fees. And these all in the morning, which they call that, I mean. And see, you gotta look at this from another way too. If you have somebody that takes loads there and you give him a doc, a document to bring to us the tax, say what happens if he don't pay? And then you don't pay and two months from now, he comes with another load. If y'all get a list, if they think we don't pay, then out. I've got a deal right now with a boat ramp stock agent. The man is giving us the sale because he parked his truck and his trailer at the boat ramp and he's saying, I can't believe they have a boat on that trailer. And he's refusing to pay that thing. Because I didn't see him pay that load off.
We gotta start seeing tickets.
Well, I did, when we were running, when I was running the program, and I took pictures, everything, even the windshield where they couldn't say. And I would get the call, the guy said, my ticket was hanging on the mirror. And I go, you know I got a picture, Rodney, go flip.
Well, they're, they're doing that. But if that man is gonna unload that boat and it's down in the Gulf of East, you can't, he's saying you can't prove that I have a boat on.
How, how much is cost it? To make this deal?
Burden of it. Well, I, 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 I think he's talking about multiple loads. What if he was getting this much throwaway, that multiple load?
What, what you got is the people, the people that were getting nailed by, is the guy that says he's a, he's not contractor, he's just cleaning up.
He's saying, hey, we can clean up, I'm just cleaning up.
And he's just calling us, leaving.
Dead clean out, people cutting down trees, people tearing down houses, chicken houses or barns. They just, they load it up and they'll bring load after load after load, hot tub, you know. And if we don't pay it, then our roll off site attendants, our face will very angry citizen. Um, who typically, you know, they still end up stopping.
And, and the people are doing this, over the years, they, they re-involve more because they figured out the system, how to make it work. If they are, when I say contractor, you got some large contractors in the town, they are contractors. That's what they do is that, these guys may work a job part-time or whatever, then they clean up debris and stuff. Let's say somebody dropped a bunch of trees and, uh, they don't, or they come and clear out, cut some timber. They don't wanna have to clean the mess up. Go hire this guy here for twelve bucks an hour. And he'll come out through the trailer and the pickup and work there for a month to clean it out, all, all or not. And we end up with the debris. And you can drive by and talk to their roll off attendants and they'll tell you, that's fun. You know, how hard it is to monitor that. But I think the other day, uh, I heard from Blue. We dropped a container and the guy ran to off sell all of another container. And they came in and filled up the limb container before he got back. Same guy.
Same guy.
Same guy. A forty yard.
Cause man, I just don't understand how one person or two people can sabotage the whole crew. And you gotta meet that check and do something tough. Now, if you got, if you're gonna bring multiple loads, you need to pay for it. Cause that money being transferred, I mean transferred, he is not the link for it. He think we're the goal. Now, we know that, so if you're smart enough to see it, you're smart enough to go.
I, I followed him, this guy's kicker, a couple of years ago. And, cause I got a call from the roll off and he was about to blow his ass. He said, you could save there, this, this was all. So, I got there and I followed him, him on the truck. He was in city limits, tearing down a whole house.
Yes.
And I just pulled in there and talked to him, I said, you're gonna have to get a container. And he was pretty vocal with me, but I said, we just can't, you know, we can't do that. And that's one out of five hundred, I probably stopped him, you know, with a table like that. But he was in the city, tearing down buildings and all of a sudden.
Did he have a car?
No, this is before that.
Oh, okay.
Multiple boxes.
So, it looks like to me then, that it, that we, that we're looking at two options. We're looking at one option that would be simplified. Y'all know the numbers from the past few years, we've seen them. And you know what it would take to keep it simple, to raise that fee that would cover that plus some more because you've got equipment that needs to be replaced. That's the simple, the simple way. Then you've got another option where you still raise the fee, but then if somebody comes in with, uh, when it's obvious that they, they're tearing down a house or they've cut down a seventy-five foot uh pine tree or oak tree, then, then you charge for that and it goes through the front. See what, to me, that's the two, two options that were considered. Or, or we could prepay for, as, as per case.
Well, I don't know the prepay idea, cause just to make the figure point it out, folks gonna lose their little prepay coupons or whatever. That, that, that's just, that's all I have. Now, what about this here? If we increase the fees, cause of our cost, and we still continue to take house and old gardens and we still continue to take, uh, raise a little amount of yard debris, truck trailer. And we continue to take miscellaneous stuff, mattresses around there, you know, loads. And then we don't start that picking until you bring the stack load. Would that work?
It may, but what they, they got pretty creative. They will travel to another.
They'll go to the back.
When we got a guy bringing in multiple loads, we figure out his contractor, I have the roll off tenant call the multiple side cause he's gonna try another side.
Try another side, you start that.
He will, especially in town, if we got there from Blue.
Yeah, right.
They're, they're pretty, they've, they've got this figured out now, trust me.
Well, Gary, what if you had one site now, set up with an individual there to make change and collect the money and have a scale? You could, one site in town or wherever that they could go to. And you had an individual there every day, seven days a week to take the money and make change. That would simplify all of it. They wouldn't have to send it to anybody. They wouldn't have to, you know, they're, I mean, they're sold all over town to make change. I mean, you've got to trust somebody to make change.
What we could do, if you're looking at that, you need to set up two sites, one thing at you, cause that, we get a lot of volume out of that. And Carl, Shady Grove needs to move, they can just go on off sell or whatever there or come in town. And you're, if you just built this up and set that site up for that, you could make that work.
That would eliminate all the repercussions and having to follow people and worry about what they've done. It would make it fair to the taxpayers, like Tom said, there's no sense in a man paying one forty, but he's paying, you know, he's having to pay for all these other people that are tearing down chicken houses and housing, you know. That just seems like a simple, like you said, a thing that's in, in one area.
And a lot of the other counties that you guys got, there, none of them take anything but household with this site. They do have satellite sites where they do take debris and stuff and they do charge by bulk and all of them. And their fees are pretty extreme over there, but he told me when, they were getting, years ago, when they were doing like we were taking everything. He said, it's, they were going through the same, what we're going through the same. He said, put the scale in and set it up. I said, do you get a lot of debris and stuff like that? He said, not really. He said, those people are gonna burn in New York. And you will get occasional C and D couches and all that. He said, but it, it did die down a lot.
You wouldn't even have to have a scale if you had somebody there, a man bought four tires in there, just go bring all of the tires and let it go by the building.
I could set, put them up where we wouldn't need a scale and just do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How do I have to keep the yard?
If, but you got, had, I'm not dependable there, so then, then, then I would.
Well, I'll just add, just, just so everyone understands, that if we go back to taking tax at any roll off site, that is, I don't think our auditor wanted us to do that. And I know, and I understand that, but deposits have to be made every day. You cannot hold half. And so, there would have to be some type of mechanism for deposits to be made nightly. And then there's the, the, the employee taking the funds to the bank and dropping, you know, preparing the deposit and dropping it off.
Other businesses do it all over town. At the end of the day, they just, they fill out the deposit, they put it in a deposit.
I'm not, I wanna say I am not for roll off attendants taking in money for our auto company business. For baking, produce, people are bothering people now for, uh, uh, ten dollars to go buy a book. I am not in favor of roll off attendants taking money. I'm not in favor of, if Mr. Stan or whoever, if you pick up your yard, you say you, you, you've had a lot of lint this weekend and you have a little wood is lot, a couple of acres or whatever. and you have a little wood is lost, a couple of acres or whatever, and, and, and if we increase the fee, I'm not for having to pay X for that. But, you know, again, if it's, uh, evidence that they're tearing down a house or a barn, a few trees, that is different. But not just your regular limbs and things, once a year, twice you cut your bushes back and you trim up your trees at home. I'm not for charging for that, or roll-off attendants taking money, that's my plan.
There's, I'm saying the same place. Miss, if I may just, I'd point it, we couldn't do it anyway, but collect it.
Well, the auditors, what, no, what I'm talking about is that you gotta separate those deals. They, they criticize me about that, so I have the people upstairs that get collecting money, sitting in bags, and somebody in the basement, gross, bouncing all that. You gotta separate, you can't let the time broken collecting money and then you can't.
You may have to change, carry the.
Yeah. What you, you know, what we can do is we could increase our fees to where you got off tow, this was, this, this amount would cover it plus give us some extra, based off of history, like Gary said, and three, just keep evaluating it all along. And if you see that it's getting to the point that, um, that we're not making enough, you know, to cover our expenses, then we may have to come back and say, "Okay, either you have to raise the fee again, which everybody has to pay, or you have to start, uh, charging in some way for people," and let the public know that, you know, this is a common basis. If, if you're tearing down a chicken house and you abuse them, we're gonna have to come back and everybody's gonna have to pay. As the assessment was raised to one sixty-four. My, I was, for everyone, my understanding was that we generate roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
That's not enough.
That is a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Coupled with leasing vehicles, leasing, leasing our heavy equipment, instead of buying out heights, and, you know, we are, we are depending on our one cent fund to do that, because we're not generating enough revenue by, or really, you know, leasing heavy equipment. If we, if we start down the path by at least raising the assessment, that would generate, that would generate revenue to the department maybe to stand on its own, that would be a step in the right direction. If y'all take a hundred thousand dollars more coverage, that's all we've, uh, been discussing, a hundred thousand dollars, you know, with people close, we can't buy the trucks that we need, because what we've got is wild, we've got roll-offs that need this and that and each other. So, to me, it seems like a hundred thousand is a little, little bit of, of, of money. Uh, before we go any further, uh, Mark has been raising his hand, he's been very passionate.
Mark, stop there. Uh, please, don't do that. Uh, Mark Ralston, he's a major, works a lot of roads. Um, I did have an idea, I might have, can't really say the good idea, but I'm gonna stay it while the conversation is happening. Sort of inspired by the state's thinking, my idea, but for C and D, what if you had, I'm thinking for like the fishing license, if you get a fishing license, pay, pay it out, and doing those, no fishing, that's kind of, yeah. What if you wanted to be able to drop off C and D, you have to get a, a second extra, um, tag that you buy at Mark Williams office for thirty or eighty dollars.
Two-tiered chart, one tax over.
Well, I, I don't think you probably do two tiers through the tax bill, but if you like, went to Mark Williams office and inbox an extra card that had your name and address on it, so you can see, be verified enough to pass around, um, for thirty or fifty dollars for three years, and you just pick up C and D there, and that would possibly help us. Make the results, nothing to lose. Who can I get a pop?
Not a bad idea.
It is a bad idea, it's all, people bought C and D, they got, got the question.
Yeah, that's still good, it's a big firm, yeah.
That's right. Paying another set.
You got a contract, if y'all are being used, well, sure.
No, you can charge a hundred.
But what you run into, the people that's renting a four hundred dollar dump, because they just thought, carried it up there for that, a seven car.
Fifty dollars.
That's worth what that.
I, I, I feel that that would be smart if we allow folks to carry a little bit of junk. Like I got a little, little six, six-decker plate, you got, and all the same, you always run a farm, you got a little junk. You know, a couple of feet stacked, uh, oak tree, bought wires, you know, being in the barn, you put it in, you know, I got a little old truck, go, feed cows in, I pile it up. That's really good in the C and D. I think you ought to charge somebody for that, you know, a little bit. My wife said, "Call off of some of this junk, I've got ER here, she calls ER hours, I call it junk." You gonna give her this junk, that's a little bit, you know, maybe a half a yard.
And that's what we.
You don't want to.
Make somebody have to.
We should do that.
We could tweak this where a person is just bringing small amounts.
Small amounts loading?
Yeah, let them go in free. Uh, like I say, we're killing us with the multiple and the large, you know, they all have trailers pulling there, they're fourteen, sixteen foot long, eight, you know, seven foot wide, and they'll be four foot high, plan.
Gary, if you, if we took off the pickup truck charges and only charged for the trailer load.
Well, I think when you look, yeah, when you look at the pickup, you know, that would, that would cut the five, you're pretty sure contractors are coming in there with a pickup load, you know, debris.
Bring the.
You could eliminate the pickups and see how that works out, you know, I don't know.
That would cut most of it out, because a person on a load has to pick up ten times, you know, I would dump ten times, it'd be a trailer that's gonna dump down.
Get, get charged a ton.
Yeah.
Uh, the volume of, of.
Now, what if, if, um, if a, if a little plan comes through and I've got three truckloads to save for now. Okay, I bring one truckload today, when you gonna bring my other truckload?
See, Mark, I think a truckload, you're talking about three, three cubic yards, roughly. So, that, that, that's not a lot at all, when the container's forty yards, that's not gonna, that's not gonna make hardly a yard. Two by twelve cubic yard, that's not, that's not a large amount.
You bring me twenty foot trailer.
When you bring in a, you know, a forty or fifty, sixty cubic yards of, of debris, that's what, that's what. And I don't have the answer for it, but I, I know that the debris exclaims a lot of that. Multiple, I mean, it's just bizarre the amount they're bringing in to it.
Well, if, if, yeah, okay, if you look at the, the new schedule, and you just take off anything that is brought in in a truck, and we only charge for trailer, on C and D and for yard debris, wouldn't that capture most of the issues that we're having?
It would, and then down here on the bottom two on the batteries and tires, looking at that.
Right, so I, I gave y'all the fee schedules that's from our last meeting. If you just take off the charges for the pickup truck, if you consider raising the assessment, and then if we charge for anything for yard debris and C and D that's brought in in a trailer, that might be, that would, that might be the solution we're, we're looking for. And then it would not include members of our population, if we're just cleaning up their yard a little bit or taking a little bit out instead, it would really capture people who are really, um, making the impact, who are C and D, do you think? So, if I've got a little truckload stuffed, you know, there's them, I, I've got two, there's them, and I bring, and one, and we go back home and get them home. I mean, it's a fear that it's not C and D, and it's not a case that.
The pickup load is killing.
It's the, right, anything that go wrong. I just don't want to punish the people that, that are cleaning up their yard. Okay, um, the other thing which still gotta consider, and I don't want to make her without us talking about it, are the RVs. Because that's been brought up, um, you know, yesterday, it's been brought up, and I had, I did have, um, a business owner in town to call me, and, um, and he said, "You need to go up, he, uh, this is what they charge in other counties," and Gary provided that tool, this is what they charge, and, um, and, and, um, so, uh, he said, "The RVs, he said, they generate, this is much trash in the house, uh, a lot of them," and we've got a lot of people out there living in, um, in, in RVs and sheds, because that's all they can afford. Um, and I know there's some hunting camps that, uh, may not use it yet during hunting season, but, um, if you have a, if you have a business somewhere that you manage hunting, like, then you need to pass that time laws that's permanent, manage your hunting, but that, okay, this year, your charge is gonna be this much, because I have to now pay more for your garbage. And I know that this one businessman said that, um, he does have problems with campers. He believe that hunting handlers, you know, camps, that they take their debris for his dumpster, and his business, he's seen them do it. And, um, dumping there, but it's taking it anywhere else, so, um, we gotta, we gotta address that. Uh, Owen, you wanna say something in?
No, I'm looking at you, I'm just, I'm, I'm too probably, uh, I get heartburn when I see you take piney and put them in a dumpster, C and H, I'll always bring you those, a landfill, piney and camper, anything, we hit it one time, I had a C and D landfill here, brought them in, had it out there. I don't know, has anybody looked at a, get somebody to turn in a C and D landfill? Uh, plenty of, uh, waiting, so, but, but, so, I've had five, six, um.
Four, about four and a half, five.
Uh, all you got, that big truck, and when he digs, it digs and digs, right? Boy, he'll, he'll, he's got to figure a way to, I don't care, uh, sure, uh, I took a house, old garden, you know what you're doing, it does, like, you don't like, have my clothes here, there's a roll-off out there, not about fifteen people in the family, can't use there, and engineering firms, they're not, they're putting one shade there, we're putting one there, it doesn't have a comp back, once you're having a good problem, four, five, hundred, that's, that's a waste. Cause, cause you don't operate too many hours, and you do the others. We got, you need to figure a way to make it more efficient, and it's something that involves me, I'm here to say, you pay four, five dollars, I've got six loads, yeah. I know you got a problem, that you got to deal with, and the other thing is on hunting camps, I'll check, the only county that's, uh, up again, I join, you know, they charge for hunting camps, I'm thinking, they, they get them checked for, I, I can get out of it, so I think we have RVs, uh, at least RVs, they don't take anything to the roll-off, don't know where the roll-off site is, and, uh, on the bill, what is up in the bay, you know, it's like, it's just, no, it's just harsh. Some of those, their garments, they, they get it yesterday, they got to, they go out and fix it all, begin, they, 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 they don't feel away, some odorized out today, that's, I do not use roll-off, uh, straight on the hunting camp, and it's nasty, and, and, yeah, it's, it's, I don't know, it's, I think, I go, and I dig up, I'm gonna do, do, like, go up on the seat, and I, and I've been, all the, this, we all go, really, the same, y'all still in here, I just hate to, you know, every time, you know, some camps, for letting me try, it's different, you know, time left, they, they, they recycle a lot, there's, uh, units per cat, or, or, goes, or, so, a lot, there's, my, I told everybody, it's like, there's a, my, my group, they all again, they sell the units to, uh, animals, animals, like, with it, still, it's, I don't have any conclusions, that's my concern.
Okay, I'm, I'm top for, um, closing any of my, my.
Oh, you know, that's just your baby, but it's, it's, it's the most inefficient thing in town.
Yeah, but more than that, it's the effort it takes, my pleasure to do that, I'm not willing to do that, I'm not willing to cut transactions to anybody in my district, I say a ton on that.
Absolutely.
Got Mr. Bush, what, say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you need to come back.
All right.
Almost forgot.
Thanks for the reminder, Stan, good for you, and I know I'm losing time, uh, C and H, I'd like to enlarge our lots, suggestions about, and the pickup load, in change, only the pickup load. Uh, Mark Wigan is setting up to use, uh, three substations, C and H, on the bridge of the basin. If you folks decided that you wanted, maybe if I was gonna have a long trailer or a large load to go to the tax collector, who buy a ticket for ten cubic yards, or fifteen cubic yards, or five cubic yards, uh, I could do that with C and H, and then I could give the ticket to the tenant, with C and H, uh, if it's something to add. Mark has to do two.
Um, how about that?
I'll do two.
Right, we don't want that, we can't have you trying to drop your courthouse.
And that would eliminate driving.
Yeah, we don't want that, but that's the nature of the game.
And it also bring in revenue to help tax the cost.
Okay, well, we're getting somewhere.
Really, what, didn't you say that Mark was using the sheriff's farm and trailer down in C and D?
Uh, the sheriff's trailer substation, the sheriff's made it available to all of the constitution officers to use on a regular basis. And Mark, that's one of our meetings, I said, he was looking up to use. Now, how far along it is, I do not know, but this is something that I think would be wise to look into a little more, because it may solve a lot of the problems, at least for the whole South Indian County.
Let me, I, I've talked with several citizens, those that say that they're not, they're paying their back share, if you like, a hundred, four dollars of their back share, they want that other business county to pay the same amount. They say there will not be two different things to the same person.
Agreed.
So, they said, if I say, "What about limbs and C and D?", they say, "If he brings more than one load to the tax per state, he needs to be charged." If he sat down a chicken house, he needs to be charged, he needs to get dumped out there or be charged. There ain't no way to worry, you can take a chicken house and put it in a dump site, they're a hundred and forty dollars, thank you, Joe. Well, well, now, will you tell me that, then have one of them actually cross the state line? That's what I say, he pays two hundred dollars a year, a hundred and four. Now, I, so I told him, I said, "Well, we can go up to a hundred and fifty-four dollars a year." He said, "Yeah, but will you bring them RVs up for the same person, then, then you still need them again, I'm willing to do it, but until then, don't you move."
But, if he did bring everybody to the same level, and then if he did look at you as a collector, send a ticket based on some volume, uh, hopefully over a pickup, for me, uh, then you would get the people that are tearing down something for that, a chicken house, or sheds, or barn, or whatever, they would have to have a ticket if they did not want to go to C and D.
That would work, so they could go get the ticket ahead of time, when he went to tear something down, he could have them in the truck, and then he come by the dump, he just gives it to them as a ticket, go along the trailer load, tickets to trailer load.
And he would not have to come here to get his ticket, he would have, if Mark is really caring to do that, he can buy a Mark's C and H, and that would eliminate the long drive.
Yeah.
That would be fair.
Okay, well, we've been talking about this for, um, so, um, I'd like to see somebody, um, make a motion, um.
Can I, can I say that first?
Yes.
If, if we look at this, and like along said, if we look at going on, going on the, and just doing the trailer, that might be.
If, if we look at this, and like the law said, if we look at going on, and, and just doing the trailer, that might be a purpose one would look at.
And that's what I was thinking, suggested, somebody, uh, I, I would like to, not, to, to say that we raise the assessment, and actually, I think it should be raised more than a hundred and fifty-four. But we can raise it to a hundred and fifty-four, and we can change our ordinance and raise it to more than that. But, um, raise the assessment, and then anything over a pickup truck, when you go through a trailer, then there's a fee for that. And, um, this, um, now how, to, to, you would, don't give a, 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 um, a ticket ahead of time for that?
At all, don't say, my word, that was the best part of it, or, uh, if he, if he doesn't have the ticket, he won't take it out.
That's right, okay. So, then it's just a question of what type of fee schedule, we just need to bring a fee schedule back to the board, and some type of process for prepaying for, for debris, correct?
I have one question, the first, the first pickup load, or if you don't put anything in the pickup, the first load, eight foot trailer load, hang it up. Some people have two lots in their new pickup trucks, they're not gonna throw limbs into back of their new trucks, they're gonna put it on a little eight foot trailer.
That's right. And, uh, this pickup is not gonna cut up the stuff, knowing, uh, to put in a pickup truck, if they got a whole three to cut down, they're gonna, they're gonna put it on the trailer.
All right, how about pickup truck, or, uh, trailer and auto seat in twelve foot? That, that's free.
You can put a lot on your twelve foot trailer.
Eight foot, eight foot, eight foot trailer or pickup?
How about a six foot trailer, what?
Yeah, you make six foot trailer, so.
He's an emperor of pickup trucks, man, he's...
Be, uh, pickup bed, be six, eight foot, that's four.
If you got a heavy truck, you gonna have somebody to come over there with it, try to pick it up, and that.
I don't know, I call them, I can't put them, they have to go to the trailer.
Is that?
Some of them have little cars, little players behind it, they put them there.
Yeah, and you could, you could, you could, or a trailer, how about that?
Or a trailer.
Or a trailer, you, 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 you...
But then you roll off the tenders, you're putting them down to the finisher, that they don't, you're saying they're gonna get cussed out. But I mean, they're gonna have to eat them, so.
Now, now, a new fee schedule, Gary, that you work on, just trying to quantify, uh, if you got a twelve foot trailer, and it's five by twelve, that's sixty, and it's four feet high, that's two hundred and forty. Cubic feet divided by twenty-seven, that's about eight yards, is that about right? I mean, my math is a little better. And, so the per cubic yard was four dollars?
Four, four ninety.
Four ninety, five dollars a yard.
On the grade, I mean, uh, yard grade.
For a, a twelve foot trailer, and we said it all about, what, eight yards?
Yeah, but, but...
You're talking about forty, fifty dollars for that ticket, that's gonna slow down, so that debris does.
Well, and when you talk about debris, like, on the side of the road and all that, uh, these counties are already doing that, Madison County's a good example. When you drive by their roll off site, it looks like a tape bar, 'cause they generate so much cash, their tipping fees, I mean, their settlement's so high, and they take no debris. So, all that's just, that's just money, so all their sites are locked like that. But when they find somebody that's delivering, absolutely throwing a bag out here, they go through it, on the side of the road, they will charge you five hundred dollars.
They give you...
You don't mean it's shared, they do, uh, they'll, he will absolutely hunt them down, and get that, get that five hundred dollars.
Better to take it out, they get, you get a lot still, you...
They don't take, they don't, they don't deal with any of that, so.
Do we just need to come up with a simple five fee schedule, using a prepay to getting this, this done, and bring it back to court?
Uh, yeah, we'll leave that out of our motion, when we get one. Does anybody wanna make a motion, I'll make the, make this one, but I will do it if I have to.
This is what you're gonna have to...
All right, I'm gonna make a stat out of motion, and then you all can amend it, you vote it down, or it's not being moved at all. I move that the board, by resolution, increase the solid waste fee for county residents from one hundred and forty dollars to one hundred and fifty-four dollars, and begun by resolution. And, that the county eliminate the reduction for RVs, so that RVs pay the same amount as the house, RVs and hunting camps. However, provided, however, that if you have just a power load, like all they have out here, and it's all RV attached, so if you don't pay any solid waste fee.
How do you gonna charge hunting camps?
Not a camp, not a...
Don't you, the roll off site, you gonna charge them too?
Uh, we, we, we do it by resolution, that's what you say. That's what's in my motion, now, we can amend it. RVs and hunting camps, but not just the power loads. And, that, that person will be entitled to bring to the roll off site, for these fees and listings. Houseover garbage, yard debris, up to the equivalent of one pickup truck load, and C and D up to the equivalent of one pickup load. Any additional C and D or yard debris will be paid for at a fee schedule, that the board will approve later, when stats is in.
And I'll quit with that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, and we have a second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion?
I have a question, please, Commissioner Page, did you want to eliminate the increase in the assessment? Excluding powerful, you don't wanna eliminate the assessment for an RV hooked up with a powerful, correct? Because we do collect revenue to that.
If, if, if there's an RV attached to that powerful, and it's an RV, or if there's a hunting camp, a house, and it's connected to that electricity, then you can charge it.
I see.
And if it's just a powerful, sit down there, and you know, it is a, like, a powerful, and there's no RV attached, or there's no hunting camp attached...
Power turned off.
They can...
The power turned off.
And if the power turned off, you'll take nothing.
Why, why are we, why are we doing that, too? We need to eliminate that card, then, we need a sticker on it, because the card is getting passed around to the city people and everything else.
Well, let's not do that in cities, let's, let's...
Let, let, let's deal with it, and I agree with you on that, then. And we can do that in another motion. All right, now, I, I'm gonna say again, now, I made a, my people look at it, that motion, it's a long motion, and we discussed it, I think we probably all understand. If you want to amend the motion, if we get a second part, then I won't be offended, if it goes down, if you vote it down for one, I won't have my finger hurt, I'm just...
Okay, we got a motion.
We've got a motion.
All right, repeat the motion, that's fine.
Well, it's to raise the assessment to one fifty-four for all.
By resolution. We'll leave it, because that's combined, that's what's...
And to eliminate the fee for travel drivers and hunting camps, and to charge to one fifty-four for those.
Limit that new thing.
When you said limit it, do houseover garbage, and one pickup load, one pickup load?
One pickup load of yard debris, or they're, or one pickup load, truck load, from, from, because C and D, or they're...
That per day, one load per day, one, uh, uh...
We can't keep dropping that, so the house gets second load, same though.
Well, if you're limiting one pickup load, and one C and D load, for the one fifty-four, they gonna keep up the rate.
Well, you can do that, as many times as you wanna go get it, one load at a time, you have to keep up dealing. Guy shows up, Gary, you got one pickup load, are they equivalent? Done.
Well, what you're saying in the motion is to charge everybody one fifty-four.
Yeah.
But your motion was to limit the houseover garbage and one pickup load, you didn't say...
Per day.
Per day, or, per whatever. It, it sounds like that you're going to...
You don't accomplish anything under that.
One fifty-four, and limit it to houseover and one pickup, uh, yard debris, or C and D loads, or is that a week, or a day, or a month?
Okay.
No term of residence.
Per visit, how about that?
They can't go there with one time at a time, you know?
Well, I mean, there's no point in that, if anybody else wants to re- crack my motion, I won't be offended.
I want your motion, and we can monitor this, and if it's getting abused, Gary, you don't know that, but you're, you're in good contact with your roll off attendants, and you'll say, listen, let me tell you something. They're bringing in a trailer load, they're tearing that chicken house down, bringing in one trailer load at a time, and if you see that it's being abused, then, and, and we're not, uh, we don't have our head above water, come back to us, and we can take another step. Uh, but this is at least a good, a good start, yes.
I have one quick question that I have to go remember, and then I'll go to the comments, but, would the exemption in the resolution be...
I don't remember.
You have a separate ordinance, well, you have, you got county ordinance that says you can go up to that amount, it's not an acting of the state.
Yeah, there's an ordinance that says the solid waste, that can be changed up to a hundred and fifty-four by resolution of the board. Now, the question was not that, the question was about RVs, I don't remember that one, that, that, separate ordinance, too. So, that would have changed that, the ordinance...
I think RVs, but, when they come, they did, they did that kind of ordinance, but what you gotta do, is go and change, change that ordinance, have a public hearing, and all that, before you change it.
So, this won't be something that's fully your aim.
Right.
So, we can use this for legislative purposes, which will be helpful.
And we're gonna get, find us a place to do, do the charging on the other stuff later on, with what, what you're saying?
Well, all this will take effect at the beginning of this...
October first.
October first, next fiscal year, so, this is just a head start, if the law stands, we're budgeting first, because we can, can get everything in, in place. Now, now, we won't limit this, uh, extra houseover, uh, not houseover, this, this limb, and this C and D to one visit per, per, per day, then you all speak up. I mean, I love it, let's get that in there.
That's what my question to the attorney is, can you vote to eliminate the travel drivers and all, without going through the ordinance to dress up?
You're talking about the RVs?
Yeah.
I think what you're gonna have to do, um, would be that you have, you have to look at that ordinance, and it may have to be amended, okay? My suggestion would be, for this purposes, for this, this motion, you've got the authority to raise the assessment, I wouldn't call it an fee, but I call it an assessment, to one fifty-four, to take us back October the first, two thousand and nineteen, you know, for the next six, four years. With respect to, uh, doing anything with regard to RVs or hunting camps, we're gonna, we're gonna look at our ordinance to see exactly what it, what it did, to, you could do that by resolution, but don't know that you can, we'll have to look at that. So, uh, so, my suggestion is not to amend the page...
You don't amend the, I'm gonna tell you...
Would be to say, okay, um, we are, uh, going to raise the assessment to one fifty-four, but keep in mind that, that, that you're gonna have to do something with regard to the RV, too. Because you can't just raise, you know, politically, you just can't raise to one forty to one fifty-four, not be coming about raising the RV, if you follow what I'm saying.
I follow, and, and, I'm a little bit drawn by this higher motion, I don't wanna do that in a, in a piece meal space. When we do the hundred and forty to the hundred and fifty-four, when the time's right, we'll deal with the RVs at the same, I agree with that, because if we do it, piece meal, we're never gonna get to that second part, that's my thing, does that sound like you?
We, we need to do it for, for, we thought, for the trailer load, at that time, too.
Yeah, okay. So, anybody else wanna make a motion, I would rule that.
Well, you got the, the, the county ordinance, that is that's that, the county ordinance allows me to go up to one fifty-four on this special thing. So, they can, as long as they can increase that, but they can't do the ones about the RVs and hunting camps and that kind of stuff, to be actually advertised, to amend or repeal that ordinance, and try to get to something else, and have a public hearing, and go, take...
Unless, pardon me, unless that ordinance says that you can raise that RV by a resolution, we need to check, I don't think, I don't think it does, but...
That the board can instruct the county attorney to prepare a resolution, and to research the additional ordinance, and possibly prepare an amended ordinance, right?
All right. Could you make the motion to, uh, uh, to go ahead and, and, and to raise the, the assessment from one thousand to one fifty-four? And include the RVs or hunting camp contention on the order?
You don't wanna do that.
You don't wanna do that, then somebody do something.
Well, I think...
It's twelve o'clock.
I got one more in store. To instruct us, like, now, someone's saying, you could draw this motion, and it's an effective withdrawal, would be to instruct, not a county in the strike, any county in the strike, to sit down, take our ordinance, to take a, take a look at it, and see if in fact, number one, I know that we can raise the, the, we can raise the assessment, you know, to one fifty-four, then we'll take a look at the RV ordinance, and then we need, we need to, uh, share an ordinance to, to raise that, or amend that for your RVs and your hunting camps and so forth. Not that we're doing it, we're just gonna, gonna do, uh, we're gonna get together, we'll have them together, and we'll, and we'll do that.
Okay, so someone wanna make that motion?
Yeah, and the bottom of it, too, part, it's like, it's like, okay, it's like, yeah, I'll make it.
Shoot, we have a motion by Commissioner, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, now, any further discussion?
I'd just like to, to not remove this one, give it, since it's an opportunity to use waste pro, I had some lot together, some people do, some don't, if I could use waste pro of mine, I would, could, could be exempt with all my things, we tried that one time, uh, considered that, and, and, sign up waste, surprise contract, take heart and dreams of, and you wouldn't, you know, must remember that, we go, we know we got some in the county to do that, and, and they did, since I, I, the county didn't let me do it, and that, that's something that's really...
But that, that whole section of the border?
It, it may do affect your border, it may do affect people's, too, yeah, thank you.
That's what we can take a look at all, let, let...
Okay, any more discussions, if not, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign sign, motion carries. Um, yeah, I think you said, so, I'm gonna do it, okay. Okay, we're on, we, um, we're on, uh, we're on, uh, twenty, general business number twenty, the board to consider approval of the corrective one D for the conveyance of twenty acre more lift at the Paris Holy Airport in the county, as submitted by Redford, attorney, for the county's development authorities.
So, this is the same piece of property that the T C D A conveyed to the county, there was an issue with the D, Conrad and Emma Sudley, and Ray Curtis worked on this together, and this is the corrective D for that franchise.
If you're a motion?
I move, second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wood, second, my official page, in further discussions, if not, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign sign, motion carries. County Attorney Donald, number twenty-one, the county attorney to discuss claims regarding former county's demonstrator Ted Ladey.
The, um, attorney, uh, the resident exterior suggested that, uh, uh, go to mediation, um, as the lady complains, um, and if in fact, two haven't been filed, but trying to get something done prior to that, court can, uh, uh, afford the mediation. court can already, uh, uh, afford the mediation anyway. Um, my only request would be that if in fact, uh, we agree with mediation, that I have a member of the board and that I also go, not gonna be cut out on, on, on that by the, by the carrier.
Okay, we, is there a motion to, um, also ask our attorney to enter into mediation with, um, the other attorneys?
I'm gonna go to the left way.
And, wanna you move it?
But, but, okay, they said, then y'all can appoint one person, I think I've heard them appoint.
We got a motion by Commissioner Conley.
Yeah, thank you.
And, uh, second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign a sign, motion carries. Who would like to be the person to go with a little video? Um...
Do we have, we don't have a big, there isn't a big, there's no date set up.
I, I don't mind the gentleman, nobody else wants to go there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I haven't said yet, so, uh, usually what we've done, this we've done is, a lot of times at my office, it's, uh, uh, you know, it's up in the air for what it's gonna be, it's a fact, it matters.
I'm volunteering now.
Well, even though it's one of the sections, other county commissioners can deal with that.
Yeah.
If one is a section, we would have to probably announce with other county commissioners. No, mediation, mediation is something that's, uh, confidential, uh, because, uh, that's only thing to get settled, so usually we've only had one to, uh, mediate over here, uh, my recommendation.
I'll make a motion with the...
Commissioner Siegler, Representative Board, he can go. I'd love to hear it, too.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
Before y'all both, let me just say, okay, if you go to mediation, and hypothetically, if there's a recommendation to settle for certain, y'all still have to approve that. Remember, you still have to, you're not cutting anybody out, um, so, yeah, I'm sure that's what I'm saying, it's, it's here. Well, but you can't have, uh, you can't have the, uh, mediation, mediation is confidential, because if you go, uh, you know, if that comes out, uh, and, uh, because offers and compromise are not admissible in court, okay? So, you, you know, they make a request and we reject it, and then they go and they, well, they reject it, it, court can't do that. Do you understand, if you make a count off?
Okay, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Page to appoint me to go, is there a second?
Aye.
The second by Commissioner Dan, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign a sign, motion carries. Twenty-two, have you ever heard anything, uh, you ever heard anything from, uh, you ever had phone calls about one of them?
Not, not yet, no.
Okay, would it, would it be appropriate for us to make, go ahead and make the motion, contend on, uh...
Getting a clean, clean call.
Someone wanna make that motion?
I'll put it.
Is there a second?
I'll make that.
Second, okay, motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign a sign, motion carries, county administrator Allen, the county agrees, the county administrator to discuss informational items. Our purchasing agent, um, Louie Taylor, has resigned after twenty-two years of service. Tara Wyrich, um, has been hired to be the purchasing agent, just for the board's information. She was our nine one one coordinator for several years and has experience with branch administration and state federal guidelines. Um, we believe she'll be a very good fit for this position, and we are happy to welcome her to our team.
Good, aye.
Thank you, yeah. Um, Miss Edith Frang has started as of this past week. We have, um, been fortunate enough to hire two new drivers, so we have a total of five drivers now, um, which is good. So, we are hoping we can retain all of them and work out the schedules, um, so we will be making those arrangements, because they should continue to promote. Um, they started last week, as I get the schedules, I will forward to the board. Um, also, our...
Hold on, hold on, I have a question. If, if someone, um, um, feels that the phone, so that when you do call, they go down to their place because it's more than a hundred fifty feet off the road. Okay, so, for instance, if you've got one road and you've got three mailboxes out on the road indicating the three counties back there, how do you get one of the green signs that says, that has the number on it, that could be posted, can we find those? I've seen a lot of people with the number on it in their yard. I thought we had at one time for nine one one addressing, but let me check on that, yeah.
The, the high business, uh, red signs, you know, you can buy those at H R B R and, you see that, eh? The green, yeah, you can buy the blue or green signs. Usually the, uh, the green is what the county uses for county roads, stuff like that, and then blue sign is for private, um, we traditionally in the county not gotten involved in making the personal signs for home just because of doing any private property, but the, uh, address signs are available, what H R B R, when we build those, you can buy them online, um, 'cause we, we, we try to promote that with fire department. We have an animal addressing, someone we're, going to someone we're not, a mailbox, or...
Yes, thank you.
That, that is a number in there, or they have doors?
No, you can buy a kit and it comes with all this, uh, the numbers that are stickers, reflecting numbers, and you just put them on the sign, you don't, oh, you have a, uh, ten, I'm gonna...
You can get a post and put your post in the ground and...
Or, yeah, it's, it's, you can add a mailbox and we put it on, or add your mailbox, or just a four by four post.
A lot of them in the county, you don't have all the mailboxes out on the main road, then you go down their road and there's six, eight houses down there, and sometimes it's just not real when you're campaigning and run all this.
Yeah, that's, on our Facebook page, we put a thing out about high ability signs, and it's like, like you said, if you don't have a mailbox that is right there, putting it, five inch post or something like that, that's where your main driveway is.
Oh, thank you. Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, as you all know, um, pitching has been very good so far this year, our boat ramps have been very busy. Um, we, um, have, we will start working with sheriff's office and some of our own staff for traffic control and oil and again, and just gearing up for scholarships. So, we already have, um, an extra attendant working on weekends to try to keep our restrooms clean. Um, we have three boat ramp attendants hired, um, we're still searching for additional boat ramp attendants, sometimes that's difficult to fill. Um, so we will use our, some of our public works employees for traffic control and also boat ramp attendants.
And that's to overcome taxes?
Yes.
And we're advertising, and you have, we don't have responsible?
Well, we have three hires, but we, we typically, that, that position is a little harder to fill at times, dealing with the large names, the, um, the seasonal conditions. Um, I feel fortunate that we have three, um, attendants, but we're still trying to acquire additional attendants.
Okay, now, I, I know that there's been discussion in the past about whether we can go up on the boat ramp fee or not. And, and, and then someone had said that since it was a grant, we're not sure we can, did you find out, yes or no? Can we increase the boat ramp daily fee and annual fee?
Only if S W C agrees to it, and the last time I spoke with our tax collector, um, about increasing the fees, we agreed it was somewhat of a process to, but there is a process we can go through to increase, um, to increase the fees.
So, so it tends to go, it's just you have to go through, whatever it is you have to go through to make it happen, and part of that process is that S W C wants to agree?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, then we need to, if there's any interest, uh, uh, to discuss that, um, we can, it's not just, you know, I just, I know it's been discussed in the past, but go ahead.
Well, I can bring that, if I make sense of the order, talk next week if you'd like, and, but, and then, um, we're gonna review the process to see if it's something that, um, the board may have an assistance.
Okay.
But that would be helpful, yes.
And this, what shop, thirty?
Two six, at six o'clock.
Two six, eleven.
Yes. So, if, if you have any items you'd like to add to the agenda, please let us know, um, within the next couple of days. We did receive our, um, our, our asset survey, um, and I have been brought, invited Mr. Conley, um, to represent the areas to present that to the board. We have some areas of concern, there are some buildings that somehow aren't covered, and we have several buildings that are under insurance, so I wanted to go through that whole asset survey with, with the board. So, we're all on the same page. Um, we have noticed that at Fort Apple Park, that we are losing trees at a rate of two to three per year, and we do the lightning strikes. So, we did ask the county forester to make a recommendation, to conduct a survey and make a recommendation, he has completed that, and he has recommended a planning schedule of ten trees a year. Um, and he is working on finding some, or looking to see if there's any funding available for that through, um, our day program, um, that we, uh, we will present that to the board as well, I just wanted to bring your attention to it. Our concern is that all the trees look to be about the same size, and if we continue to lose trees every year, that we'll get to a point where we don't have any trees left. And just to preserve the, that site, we would like to consider, um, having a planning schedule so we can maintain our trees.
I agree.
I agree, and, uh, let's try to replace those, those are longleaf pine, I, I...
They're yellow pine, yeah.
So, let's replace them with longleaf, character.
That's, that's the plan, and he recommended ten trees a year because he stated that probably only two or three would survive. There's a lot of traffic out there and...
Right, I, I would hope, we'd buy one, maybe, it's probably, it's got eight, six or eight feet tall.
Correct, that's the problem.
Longleaf pine, it looks like a twig, it's gonna start to dead.
That was his recommendation, that it be at least, uh, I think he said five or six feet tall, and that we somehow paid it to try to protect it, but that's why we wanted to get a forester involved because he felt like he could provide us with some extra advice on that, so we have...
Real fancy line, mm-hmm.
Right.
And when you prepare, you hear, you know, the...
Um, county staff, and we are now going through our budget request process, we are trying to be ahead of schedule this year, um, and we have probably submitted about a third of our budget request now. Um, our deadline is May thirty-first, so we are, I'm confident we will get most of our budget request by then or after seven weeks. Um, and the library grid is scheduled to be, for repair, um, starting May twenty-third, so we are making progress with that. And last but not least, um, we have a update regarding the dead man's curb project, and, and late in May, so...
Follow me to that.
Thank you.
You see it, right?
We, so we know we need to reach out to the four affected park owners for the realignment of their insurance. Two of those responded back fairly decently, and the remaining two, we have to send out a second letter. Since that time, one of those landowners has responded again, you know, because, not for the... So, as you see in the map, there is the aerial of the existing alignment for the tree roads, and then the curb alignment, which is the half area, is the proposed realignment, which is the highest curve that you can make for the intended design fee, um, to that area. So, the byproduct of that is the effect, uh, so the Daniel Williams Park woman or the park property, in the center, the Cindy Neiman property, also in the center, and then, uh, Melvin Adam Bowden property on the various paths. So, the Daniel Williams property and the park property, um, both agreed pretty quickly that they had interest in working with us for acquisition of the affected area.
Park, mm-hmm.
And Daniel Williams belonged to the park, and one of the top.
Okay, okay.
And what you can see is, uh, the spreadsheet that I gave you, uh, you know, eight and a half by letter, eight and a half by letter, is the spreadsheet that identifies the park owner, identifies what type of property it is classified in the property spreadsheet office, as well as the assessed values and the affected acreage to extrapolate a unaffected cost. The second sheet of that is the actual letter, uh, this is actually the technical indication that we sent out to the, uh, two remaining affected landowners. The third one there in the middle, um, Nick Neiman, is, uh, only when we get him to the Bowden, and my understanding that, uh, Commissioner Murray had a discussion with us about him, protecting this, and I was waiting on confirmation, written confirmation that, from them, that, yes, we're okay with this process, we'd like a, a fifty, we're for, so, at some point, we just need some written confirmation, that, even if that's a male.
And there'd be one more.
Okay, we just need, we need that some, something along those lines, yes, yes.
Just a file.
And then the last parcel is the one in the very center, uh, and I've spoken, I don't think to Neiman, as well as her attorney, on two occasions. They're not adamantly opposed to, um, our proposal, but the difficulty is that since Neiman expressed her position was that she felt with the alignment coming through her property and by affecting it, that it rendered it less usable than its original configuration, and her position would be that she was only interested in it if we were going to acquire the entire park, uh, her affected amount.
I'd agree with her on that.
Um, to a certain extent, you know, with the western side of it, uh, with closure of that post dead man's curb alignment, you know, we would be closing that right away, which would have joined, which would revert back to the case of the property owner. But you still have a fairly developable, developable portion of property, but obviously not an original, um, configuration. So, yeah, I can see both sides of this, that, you know, she, it's an opportunity obviously to kinda work for the green place, if we were to acquire the entire park over first, or have them be, um, before we're trying to figure out how to tell them to do that. So, the reason we're here is we kind of need, um, direction from the board on how would you like to, uh, proceed. Logically, at this point, if we, if we have full, um, approval on all the affected landowners, my next pass would be I would issue a survey pass order, I'd survey the alignment, I would have actual affected property, uh, for footage, proceed then with trying to get a favorable for those affected areas, including comparable, and then, or, uh, negotiation of activation.
Okay, now, um, um, this is, um, Neiman, it's, it's, for this, boy line comes out here to a point, and that, that's the rest of her competition, and that doesn't look like much, how much is it?
This, it's, there's actually, the, the overall blue rectangle square is her entire park, so she would have a piece that's on the east side as well as a piece on the west side.
Okay, so this would be hers?
This entire parkville that is here, this would be hers, so she would line up the parkville on the east side as well as the parkville on the west. And then we would close it, so out of the center of this right away, up to here, would also be hers.
And if we, if we have the purpose of the whole thing, now this is the...
Kind of property, kind of property.
Yeah.
I would need, seems like it's an acre and a half or so, if her, um, think of what it was. I mean, I think like it's an acre and a half or so, just her alone, think of what it was, something like that. She did, um and just for the benefit of the board, we're talking about the property that is on the west side of the existing right away past Dead Man's Curve. And that's the um fadler property. And the question was the accessibility of that um post realignment. And you have to recognize that once it closes, that southern portion of that right away reverts back to that of the landowner. So he will not only have this affected portion at the very southern extreme. You would actually have much more back up that's still gonna be along that right away. So we're not, my position would be that we're we're not landlocking it obviously. And he still has, will have highway collector road frontage even after the realignment.
But he won't have frontage on the new uh road.
Yes, he will.
Uh well, it's required of the east of this property.
No, sir, even um even along, yes, because remember the existing right away on Detroit would be abandoned. So if you drew a line right through the center of that right away, all the way back up to Dead Man's Curve, that now is his.
The whole right one?
That's track curve. So what you would see is instead of it just being this portion here that says right away, he's now gonna have all the way back up here that's the right way. And then his property will run all the way to here and that way. So he now has this.
His property run.
This one.
But he wouldn't have property on that on the main highway anymore.
Yes, sir, yeah. Yes, sir, down here. From here all the way back up to here will be his property from right there up to that section.
But he loses his property from here to here.
He would not have it much.
He won't have it much.
About a truck buddy, two hundred foot enough, three hundred foot enough.
I've talked to him about that.
That's good. But I don't think that we have negatively affected his access to a collector highway sufficiently to warrant um increasing property value with that in effect.
I think that's made sense. I'm not too good at property ownership status.
Local roads don't require sixty foot of access. When you move up to collector road, your property needs to a hundred. We have well to choose from. So if you were even thinking about the developable, developability of that property in future, we would see that there's ways of access that would be required in our case. But I I couldn't sit here and regrettably say, yes, we have negatively affected the developability from an access standpoint of three to three.
What would be negative in the value of this property in your opinion?
I don't think so. I decreased it. I gave him more property. He he is not losing this property, he's only gaining property.
I know, but he's losing some road frontage.
Correct, he is losing some. He has my own property.
Have you spoken to him?
No, I didn't because he's not, I said, he's only, he's a gaining landowner, not a losing landowner. So from an acquisition standpoint, I only need to talk to the gains, to the losing landowners in order to try to acquire the property.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
You tell me, because the Neiman's in the center of the parcel is, there's only one, she's out of her mouth. The only way you're gonna get this, if you don't get the confirmation proceeding to be a part of the property.
And what is the value of the whole property?
She had her own opinion of that, of course. Um my perception is that he would be required to do an appraisal. We would only offer up to the appraisal.
And she could take the other sheets and not take them?
That is correct.
And then the other thing is um eminent domain, which, you know, I know nobody wants to exercise that, but that's that is an option.
That is correct.
In the in the um state of public safety, when you have debt on this curve.
That that is an option.
But the speed limit's gonna be in the curve.
I guess the speed limit's the same, the fifty five, um but that moves it up to a sixty mile an hour dying speed. And then um the maximum super elevation rate of ten percent in the.
Another one, the log truck coming off the Y Street Road's gonna have to be in a curve. We gotta look right away. People wanna get by. Anytime put out there with a log truck there?
Yes, um if he's come coming out of where, Y Street? Yes, sir.
It's gonna be pretty dangerous out there in that curve right there.
My guess is you have a kind of road scale on this um. And we could, if if it's, I will only say if the problem is just a visibility issue.
Well, there would be visibility from both ways.
Not necessarily.
And a log truck in the middle of the road is pulling out.
I understand, sir, but there there are visibility distances that they are required to have in order to make a left turning movement, which causes two lanes of traffic. So there is a time that's allocated with that which equates to a distance based on that vehicle traveling that fast. As long as they have that visibility, the facts are, that's that's okay. If they don't, then we could do the by three panels that they can, as you're going into that curve, put a forty five mile per hour restriction on it. So that you lower the speed as they're coming, which increases the time that you have to make that turn. I did not pull um a measurement to see if they are exceeding the visibility of that. If, the other question was, I'm getting attention to this, is if we, how how could we not affect the Neiman's property? And one way is to flatten the curve a little bit. You know, let's not just put ten percent super elevation, let's let's hold it at a fifty percent, which makes that curve move to the east. Which also increases your by distances. My my worry with that is if as it's moved to the east, you start affecting the properties up at the southern end, further to the east, which you've got a borrowed area there as well as an abandoned area. And I might start getting in their front courses.
Right, you'll get around the front course of the law.
Yes, sir. And so that's like, it's not, it's really not in a bad location um relative to the existing uses. It's, you just have that one curve that I think um that'll be able to accommodate this.
Okay, and we and we've never exercised, never never any, just right here.
Prior to me getting these uh attorneys, uh and uh Mr. Lee was the attorney. Uh we uh why we exercised uh the domain on uh the mail roads, had a three file on it. But as far as my, I've been the county attorney since whenever I've been, I have not, I have not done it.
I'm assuming that that probably would be a long uh process. Um and what is the process?
Okay, the first process that you do is y'all need to both decide if you wanna exercise them of the name. Then, you know, inform us to do um uh file what he calls a notice of taking. And which that at that particular point in time, the judge determines whether in fact the taking of the property is for a public service and it needs to be done um uh specifically. The judge says that in fact that it is uh for a public purpose, then the board would have to uh place money in uh the registry of the court or whatever the appraisal value, you have the appraisal value. Then you file suit and uh against the um the landowner. And of course, the landowner has the right uh to object to the notice of taking. But it's it's just that if you, you know, you can't take it, then it ultimately ends up into a uh you go to mediation and you try to settle it with them. And if you're not able to do that, you have a trial as well as a person jury. And the jury will determine, we have our pleasure go in and say what the value is. And then the the uh landowner has the right to do that. But what would be the damage to remainder and the um uh the jury will determine what in fact the amount of the compensation would be for the property. It's a it's a lengthy process, it's a lot of time. Plus, you have to pay the uh landowner's attorney to give the cost also, so.
So it's not the that that the winner can ask for the other losing side to pay is always.
Always, you you can, you you, even when you settle it, you 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 have to pay the attorney fee and the cost for the other side.
I would hope that without without without.
Without the cost.
How does it do that?
Neither.
The biggest concern is they don't let let his property, you split his property.
That is true.
The damage to the remainder will be seen more. And I agree.
That's kind of odd.
I agree, um.
She will.
Well, I know I asked you, probably that's something we can't discuss right now.
I think it probably shouldn't hurt this one.
Okay.
I bet several people are gonna attack me. And why why we don't put a red light there in the curve? Which that is a lot cheaper than rebuilding the road.
Um, yes, it would be cheaper than building the road. But I do not think that it would be something that is consistent with the characteristic and the traffic features of that road. This is a major collector highway, two thousand vehicles or so per day. I don't, I don't see it as um as being consistent with that traffic, traffic pattern.
Um, for safety reasons, what they brought that up for, you know, for safety reasons.
It would slow down. You will, um presumably if they do slow down. You know, we've got another instance where we're dealing and seeing accidents, if you heard one a month ago, where the eyes wanting four ways officers, people are having accidents out of out of stop line. You know, I went back and looked at all the the um traffic history of it. And it's not that they're running it, they're stopping, they're stopping and then pulling right out from the number of it. So I mean, there's, you know, your perception is that you can do this and just the traffic um with the traffic signs. There are warrants that are required in order to do this. And some of those are major volume roads, minor volume roads. Again, I don't think you're going to need those warrants um in order to do that.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, it's going for directions out there, you know, you might as well say, that street road, the victory, the victory road, I mean, it's a four, you could make a four while you stop there. I mean, uh, I think it's all.
I agree.
I would never agree with that, uh because I think that would make it more dangerous.
I'm about like my turnaround idea there.
Yeah, and I know this past weekend, the traffic was heavy on the Detroit. And and a month, it's gonna be.
Two thousand vehicles per day is a very realistic number for typical traffic on that road.
I'm not sure of stop times or a stop line. We need to make this curve so it's a continuous route. This is my opinion, where it's a continuous route and it's safe. Um.
Right, I'm just, I'm thinking my thing out of all stop times, I don't mean all red lights on what they've talked in the conversation. You know, you got more than six thousand, you won't do a mini red light there, but again.
You do, and it wasn't long ago, they went through and took out a lot of those um median interruptions because they're wanting to make sure they can can keep the traffic still or moving as much as they can.
Nineteen ninety eight, you know.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but you got crossing Central Road and a red light there, you know, coming across the border of New York, you got all the log trucks and everything that's crossing like that. You know, I'm just, this looks mighty dangerous in this curve at this time, I'm out of a log truck, is what I'm saying. You know, and for safety reasons, I don't see one that just come, keep the old road coming back up there and die in the in the curve.
And that's why I I I took and wrote a note to myself to go back and check the visibility distances on it.
Right, indeed.
Just to make sure, and I will, just to make sure that, you know, you have that. And if we don't, then the obvious um fix to that is a traffic, or excuse me, a speed reduction as you're going into that in order to make the visibility distance match that speed. So I I will check that.
If you recall, when we replaced, oh, not we, but when the state replaced the offside river bridge, um it's um it was the opinion of the residents there and and I I agree that um that visibility was much worse with the bridge that's higher and you've got the road coming out from offside landing. And we met down there with S D O T officials, several of them, and all the residents. And as they even witnessed some of the um rock trucks and all coming across the the bridge at that rate of speed, they went back and they said, well, we feel like it would be less safe if you slowed that traffic down. We want it to slow down a lot. And their analysis was, that's more dangerous than leaving it the way it is. But they did compromise finally and they reduced the speed. And they put up blinking um lights, so it's a, it's a.
I think they're actuated too.
They are. And so uh if if a vehicle is, if a, if I guess it's a boat, if somebody pulls it out of offside landing, then it warns the traffic on the road that's.
On the main road.
On the main road, exactly. So there's all kinds of things that can.
Well, obviously, we would try to go with a passive system that accommodates visibility so that you have normal maneuvers safely versus we add to extent no M of an active system that requires a change in the driver's behavior in order to accommodate safety. I'd much rather make it just, okay, I'm approaching the curve, you know, let me get off, take a slower rate here. I run through it forty five and in doing so, that by street turning movement still has sufficient time to clear and get back into their lane for left turn movements without competing or passing the uh the main road.
Well, my my objective is to make this safer. You know, we can't bring back my mom and my aunt, but we can sure do, and the other people that have died there. But we can sure do something to um everything that we can, that that doesn't happen to somebody else's mother or brother or sister or whoever. And that's fine.
Yes, I agree. We actually have, um I think it wasn't too long ago, there's a H I F T highway safety program, Black, you know, in the full acronym right now. But we are looking at, with the University of Florida, going, um actually, this this is with, I think, one of the consulting, you have the consulting engineer, that the full thirty six mile worth of the Detroit corridor, we are looking at fine containment marking improvements in all of the um accident and traffic, excuse him, hurt configuration throughout that whole thing. And I told him that, you know, this is one of those things that we're looking at here. So we'll have some signage improvements in the interim until we actually bring this to fruition. But ultimately, this is a possibly much safer configuration.
So it seems like to me that that you need to try to negotiate with this one's landowner and uh just.
What I would suggest is that, you know, if if that is what she wants to do, instead of she just telling me that, then I would say, you know, okay, give me a written response to our request. And if your response is a proposal that includes X, Y, Z, then that's what we'll present to you guys. And then we'll go ahead and perform the logical sequence of the next step with the um survey and appraisal.
Yeah, well, I I mean, if I'm on this company, I certainly, I mean, I understand her position. You know, you're gonna put a road right through her property and it renders it, you know, really not, not very useful. But um and and it's, it's probably what somebody's willing to pay for. I guess, you know, but um I would hope that um she would be reasonable and um know that we're we're not trying to, we just wanna make it safer for everybody.
We tried to impress that in the letter, um but obviously as a public, a public agency, you know, we we will praise that whatever the comparable suggests that it is, uh the tangible value of it is hard to capture. And I don't know that you, you know, Congress impressed me, I don't know that you have a lot of attitude on tangible value versus comparable value.
We have some attitude.
Uh you may have the easiest. Just just me.
I totally appreciate your wonderful idea.
My just idea, yeah. So for me, do good.
Oh, and I and I'll I'll follow you there.
You're waiting for this, this will, you're waiting for Melman now to give you the response.
That's right. I just, I I knew that the committee had spoken with them. I'm just waiting for a waiting for the written confirmation of that to put with our documentation. And then I will reach back out to Miss Neiman, because she gave us a a working phone number as well as our attorney. And I will reach a written response to that, take this as a gift. And that'll give me something definitive to present to you guys to say, here's what the situation is, give me the marking orders.
He wanted to make sure he had access to his bar bit there. You see his bar bit there?
Yes, sir. Yes. Yes, sir, yeah, and it is, matter of fact, um, it's ready, you know, the, the suck we, the effect on it is...
Not very much right in the front.
No, sir, it is point zero zero one effective, it was literally, I think it was just like a few hundred square feet. It was, it was very, it, it literally just clipped, it, it almost makes you wish you could just, we could just hear not even that, you know, the, I don't, I don't, and when we surveyed it, you know, these are lot lines that were pulled from the accessory side, so when we actually assessed it, I mean, actually surveyed it, we may have to do that, you know, maybe three foot to the left and...
He's gotta work with the people to make sure that they have access to the barb yet there.
We will not accept that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frau.
Do you have anything else to add? Okay, I would be for comments and concerns from the public from our agenda office if you're here today, and you wish to speak on something that was not on your business, you can come over, text the name and address, and speak for three minutes. Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience. And if you're interested in any of our, our buildings, um, four twenty-six Rangers, um, here's to speak about the concerns that were not mentioned, whenever we could please that you speak up around the circle. When, when you agreed, Gigi, agreed, this was a good idea, there's this always talks about the recreational aspect, people being able to walk home, if you need going, people being able to drop off, off cars, or, off cars or cars, um, those of us who, that were, I mean, it floods so often, down West Village, we're unable, most of us don't have got cars, because if we did, it would rush out, because it floods so often. And so, what we are concerned about, the residents here, Mr. Gigi and Mr. Matt, and myself, and the others who is, that could be in here with the, and, they let, they let, they let me, our concern is safety. And we are approaching the storm season right now, where we're gonna have storms, and you know yourself, and so if you have any questions, and you're very familiar with our vehicles, you don't know if those walls have come off, I fell in front of course, it's, you know, the fourth of July, and I have headed, it's here to all lines, and within literally minutes, and on the one that I knew was the most, of, at least one person died, and I think maybe more, but it came up to about a flash, and it can be a flash flood, and whenever that water comes over our seawall, it emerges right away, with the water in the, over in the canal behind my home, and I was just telling Sean recently, that our edge of our road is literally the edge of the canal. The edge of the road, there's a little bump of dirt when they're kicking up with their rares, that little bump of dirt right there, that, then when we're turning out of there and trying to turn around with a boat and a trailer, it all comes to a halt. So what I'm saying to you is, it is not safe, it is an issue of public safety and our lives out there, to have more than one breath off that, off that canal, because the nitrogen is very wild, I mean, he built that out there, and he, I think someone at Landis built that out there, I'm not sure how they did it, but I know, I've played with him there over fifty years, John's father built it to retire, he died a little years, he was hardworking, so no, and, um, we have tried to take care of it, that the children enjoy it, being able to be out there, but it is, um, safety is, is not set as, that, that's why now, I have been by my own farm before, phones go out, and a car that flooded out, and I was able to back off, take a long driveway, turn left, and go back over the bridge. It is not safe for us to be out there without that. I ask you, I urge you, when I learned from the lady at DOT, I called her before and after the hearing on the six, and she assured me, she said, we're trying to get categories if we're for small bridges, or being competition with the big bridges, because right now, there's no chance for the big bridge, little chance for the small bridges to be funded, because the people just get the funding. And so she tried to work that out, and she goes, even when the bridge is funded, it's all the way, it's not funded, and it's funded, it's not going anywhere. And I think we'll have to go a few more months, this, this season, we need that bridge repaired enough, if you can repair, you know, if our cars go over, and that's our other concern, the people in the community who have to drive across, who have got cars. Our major concern is human safety, and we want our people that live on our street to be safe, and to be safe.
What you're asking, and your comfort, I guess you have a little bit more, because you waited a long time, I've got a real mic today, but, um, anyway, so what you're asking is, uh, you, you would like to see the bridge repaired from our state, like cars can go over it now, waiting on potential flooding for some time later.
They've all legalized it.
They've all legalized it, so that a boy can listen there, and I would say, the other, everything is, I would say, to have a real, to have a fund for people to use that bridge, to, to go over it, and we see when people, you know, they shouldn't be going over the covers. Now, have a fund, have, have that posted, and have it posted up there over the road if you need it, but this, this, this is negligible, I think it would be negligible to, to do this, and so I have it, and when I was looking down home and in, in different ones, the thing, the first thing, I remember was Malcolm, he says, yeah, it sounds like we need to replace that, and you've done it before, it's always been repaired, you never had to wait before, and you never, you never get to do it with, so, so... I appreciate your comment and expressing your, uh, concern, and, um, don't hit the board this morning. If you want to camp, see if there's any funding available, and, uh, if there's anything we can do, I'd be, be, be happy, and don't hit the board this morning. Okay.
Here you go.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, John Nicker, from Perry, I've been here a long time.
Long time.
With, it was four twenty-six Rangers Drive, that, so, I had some pictures I made of the bridge, uh, back when I worked with Perry Lumber Company, we put out a wood tree plant, you know, I did most of the work, then we, we used to have the county come by on a regular basis, and then they had, get some treated lumber, uh, timber, or the bridges they needed to fix, so I'm familiar with fixing bridges, and I just wanted to show you what the bridge y'all were looking for, and, uh, I think, I got two more.
You can, you can, I think this is right now.
Okay. These fans are wrong, look at it. Actually, uh, there's not that much wrong with that bridge, it was done fine, wasn't it, kinda close, uh, except somebody ran over the guardrail on one side, uh, if there's any problem with the bridge at all, it, it might be straightened up some of these timbers, but, it was terrible. Yeah, it could be repaired easy, I mean, uh, since, kind of, passed it all down, so I didn't know if y'all had seen it.
I'm still on the track, I'm still asking, uh, just to get off and off the bridge.
It's just down the hole, it's, it's down the hole.
It's all pretty, isn't it?
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah, yeah, it's pretty, uh...
That tree's lumber up here, John?
Yeah, it's crazy lumber, all of them, you know, they just, they already got the sign up, uh... Yeah, so wrong.
It's here a little.
It's got a guardrail on one side, keep this driving over the edge of, it's been there for years, fifty years like that, this is, it's repaired in the number of times I've counted, and that's on one side, and on the other side, and somebody probably drove a trailer over this thing and it got caught on, and, uh, that happens on an occasional basis, they just go in and replace it, things like, but I, I just wanted to bring that by and show you that I think repairable, big decision I was in my week.
I thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't question, you know, I don't see the light, no, that's my question, the bridge. The county didn't, uh, the, the, we didn't close the bridge, the state recommended, they closed it, didn't you?
The state gave us a prompt corrective action that said, you need to close that bridge to all pedestrian and vehicular access, because the structural integrity had degraded to the point that it was unsafe. And this is not something that they did on a whim, this has been, in the, the tonnage listing that you see, I think it said three tons, that's only three tons because that's the least amount that they can pose. This thing has been degrading for a number of years, what you see on the surface isn't necessarily indicative of the decay and the lack of structural soundness that's underneath. That's what DOT looks at, they do a complete surface, all the way to a substructure analysis, they review it every two years, this bridge had actually, the frequency on the inspections had increased to, I think it was a six-month process, or six-month frequency because of this severity. So this, this is not something on a whim, and what looks to be minor things have very major, um, ramifications, so...
They don't draw your boots, do you, if you're there, and let that stop what you do? I can't argue with, you know, you know, your friends, the state has a statement that they want it closed down, you see things the way it is, but let us, we appreciate you being here, and let us see if there's anything we can do, okay?
Okay, well, and, I agree with him on the, on this one side of the bridge there, it should need to look at with that, I, I believe that's, that's...
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to, if you wanna comment on, um, that wasn't on the incident? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go to the, uh, or the national, uh, commissioner, market, commissioner Jim, commissioner Page.
No, this time.
Commissioner Moody, okay, um, and neither do I. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
I would say, I...
Not, I'm trying to find the, the...